Six thirty, let me go ahead and call our work session to work. For normal, I'll do a review of tonight's city council meeting agenda, pausing different after different agenda items. Okay, if anybody has a clarifying question or comment for staff so that they can prepare. Uh, we'll call the meeting to order. I'll call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. We'll then go into public comment. I see that uh, I have Joseph D'Amzino who is uh, going to be online at that time. Has anybody else submitted anything else, Jeff?
That's it at this point, man.
Either in person or online?
Correct.
Awesome. All right, well, uh, do we have any uh, response to last week or anything? Uh, to our last meeting? Do we have any meeting? I don't see it on the agenda, so I'm assuming.
I don't think so.
I don't think so, but. Oh, uh, Kevin Moss did um, provide public comment to the council. Um, I addressed some of those uh, comments during the meeting about the traffic, specifically the baller that Oda had placed on um, Proctor, sorry, I mean.
The motorcycle kitchen.
Finding words today. Um, so I believe that we've sufficiently addressed the comments that he made. He also provided some additional comments to Shep Husky, which we've um, taken and passed along to Oda, so.
Awesome, thank you. So it sounds like we won't have a response.
No, yeah.
Uh, we've already responded.
I just responded again too, sorry.
No problem.
Uh, then we'll get into the consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes for the September sixteenth meeting. We'll then get into a presentation on the police staffing study results. And then we'll have an ordinance. We'll have a public hearing on adopting or looking to adopt the uh, twenty twenty-four eighteen ordinance, twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, the envision Sandy twenty fifty comprehensive plan. Under new business, we'll do the contract approval for engineering services for older creek water treatment plant upgrades. Will be a good uh, opportunity to talk about the tour that some of you went on. A review of applications for the appointment to the vacant city council seat number five will be the final item. We'll do a report from the city manager and then we'll wrap up our evening with our committee and council reports. All right, with that, Tyler, will you please call the roll for tonight's work session?
I mean, Jeff, not skipping yet, Jeff.
Happy to, Mayor. Uh, Councilman Megan.
Present.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here, just in from PDX.
Get your foot on the carpet, picture or anything?
Yeah. Uh, Councilor Hutchinson.
Yeah.
Mayor Bloom.
Yeah, thank you for that. With that, let's get into our work session agenda for tonight. Which is our uh, developmental services department code enforcement uh, report and conversation. Want to kick us off?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, I'll take this over to Kelly and um, Chris here in just a second, but the council will likely recall that uh, there had been numerous questions around even municipal code violations uh, and fines. Um, those comments had come up uh, over the last couple of years on a variety of different issues, but I think the one uh, biggest issue that stuck out and really um, was the catalyst for this work was some trees that were uh, cut down against a final order and there wasn't really a lot of um, teeth or good, good uh, code language to make it financially uh, a financial deterrent from a developer clear cutting some of their land. And so Mayor Paul Young appointed a couple of council members uh, to a task force, so to speak. Um, staff went away and did some research with other jurisdictions on what they charged. Um, looked at our code from a comprehensive perspective to make sure we were streamlining some of the enforcement timelines. Um, and have what we have uh, to present this evening for you. So Kelly, I'll take it over to you and you can add anything else before you jump in.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just jump right into the slideshow here. I know we're uh, pressed on time here. As an advancing. There we go. So just a little bit uh, in addition to what Tyler uh, just covered. One of the main reasons, in addition to kind of upping the fines and having the increased fine uh, schedule for fine escalation and reversible fractions and fractions is that a lot of the code enforcement procedures vary drastically across the different chapters and sections within the Sandy municipal code. So since Chris started with us about thirteen months ago, he's really done a really good job of identifying where those deficiencies are and how confusing basically the entire code currently is set up. Um, another big problem, and I'm not going to go through these uh, bullet point by bullet point, but I'm just kind of covering some of the high uh, high end stuff here. Some of the code sections have not been updated since nineteen seventy-three, nineteen seventy-four, nineteen seventy-five. So for example, the business license code has not been touched in fifty years. Um, it's really outdated. It refers to old things that we would never refer to them as now. It has fines referenced in there at hundred dollars, whereas other chapters like chapter one eighteen, one point one eight is kind of the guiding chapter for the whole municipal code fine schedule. That has a fine of a five hundred dollars and it goes up to a thousand. Well, we have a few code chapters that actually reference lower amounts, so that kind of that overrides or supersedes one eighteen. And so that's in the sign code, the business license code, and I think there's one other code chapter that all reference hundred dollar fine amounts. So one of the things we want to do through this process is get those out of the individual chapters and refer back to chapter one eighteen in title one. Another big thing which I discovered just recently with our city attorney is chapter one point one six is actually something that hasn't been touched, I don't believe, in fifty years either. That's a code section that's no longer relevant and we'll just be um, recommending complete removal of that chapter. Um, it would require trial by jury in instances of anybody getting cited to that. We don't have that at our municipal court, so basically it would just be thrown out. So um, there's just a bunch of old references, outdated material throughout uh, that is entire Sandy municipal code. And then one other thing I was going to point out here at the bottom is the sign code, which I'll be bringing forward and I believe November for a work session is riddled with a lot of first amendment violations uh, that we have not been enforcing, but we need to get them out of the municipal code. So the limitations to this project currently, um, Chris and I, working with the task force, which I'll go over in a second here, we're pretty much limited to the items that Chris covers, which are on the right hand side in pink. Uh, we are not really touching the majority of what the, the police department uh, covers with their code enforcement, with the exception of outdoor burning, and I'll go into that a little bit more in a few minutes here, but the main thing is that outdoor burning doesn't have an enforcement section in it. So if if you do illegal outdoor burning that violates our code, it's a little bit unclear what would even occur besides the fire department stopping you. Um, it doesn't give any authority to the city itself to go do anything about it. So that's something we do want to tackle as part of this project.
Does the fire department have any uh, citation or enforcement?
That's a great question and it's something we haven't dug deep enough to know yet. I'm sure they do.
I can, I can answer that.
Go ahead.
Uh, the fire department doesn't have any teeth, um, but uh, if it's a significant enough infraction, um, it gets turned over to the DQ because the DQ is who monitors all of that and determines if it's a burn day or not. And so they have um, uh, finding capabilities and enforcement capabilities and it's up to them if they choose to do so, so, but it gets turned over to them most of the time.
So if we did something with outdoor burning and they got called, we could take it instead of DQ?
No. I, well, I can't, I guess I, I shouldn't answer that. I can't, I can't speak to that, but DQ is, is as far as I know, is the, is the primary in enforcement agency for that.
And I, and I'll go into that a little bit more here in a second. Um, just to cover the task force a little bit more, Tyler already spoke to this, I won't, I won't go too much into detail, but Mayor Pulliam set up a task force with three council members and our commission chair. We did meet on September sixth, uh, so just about a month ago. I just want to say a few things out loud here for the record and for people listening online as well. The majority of what we're changing here will have increased fine amounts, but the reason for that, as Tyler already pointed out with the tree citations, is for compliance. It's not for money or increasing revenue. Um, we should also point out, and we've used this actually in the very uh, recent past, I believe in August with a property, um, if the fine amounts do get large enough on properties where there's no compliance occurring, what that can actually lead to is judicial foreclosure process, which basically if there's a really egregious violation, or in this case, there was about, I don't know, twelve, fifteen ongoing violations for this one house. Um, we were getting dozens of calls a month. Um, what that led to is over a hundred thousand dollars in fines, which then led to the judicial foreclosure process being set forth and going forward. And that is actually now going forward on that one property. So that is one additional thing that higher fine amounts can lead to is a resolution in cases where otherwise there'd be no resolution. Um, a few other things I was going to point out, uh, the task force wanted us to do is research other sanctions in additional, in addition to the typical citations that we have cited in our code. Uh, one of the things that they mentioned was potentially a deposit equal to a percentage of the total project cost. This would be like um, in the case of like a subdivision, they would put um, some money down. So if there are violations, they would actually pay out of that deposit. It's something we have not really had time to dig into further, but I think it, I think it warrants more discussion and more research. So we'll be talking to our city attorney about that over the next few months. Um, they also wanted us to research how to define and differentiate between homeowner violations and developer violations and having different, potentially having different citation schedules for the two. Um, I think it's a great idea to look into and see if that's a possibility. Um, again, it's going to be something that our attorney uh, Josh Soper is going to be heavily involved in. Uh, but I, I, I do believe it actually has a lot of value in that a developer that might be doing a ten million dollar project is not going to be really burdened by a one thousand or two thousand dollar fine, whereas a homeowner would be. So I do want to look into that a lot more. The task force also wanted us to make it very clear, which we've added into the draft business license code uh, revisions, is that there'd be exceptions for vendors at um, community events such as mountain festival, winterfest and the Mount Hood Farmers Market. Um, so that, you know, if they're coming to winterfest for one day or two days, they wouldn't have to go through the business license procedure.
If, if I may. So um, Sandy Mountain Festival over the years, there has been a little bit of, I guess, internal conversation and frustration uh, with some of the pop-up market stuff that pops up throughout town during the weekend of the mountain festival. Um, you know, there's two ways of looking at it. One is it's kind of nice having these different markets pop up. You can walk up and down the highway. It's kind of neat. They view it as it takes away from their vendor experience, right? That, yeah, that the Sandy Mountain Festival truly is to draw to come in. They charge a certain amount for a premium, you know, to be part of the Sandy Mountain Festival. And then when one of these kind of fly-by-night shops kind of pop up, it takes away the value of the vendor experience of the Sandy Mountain Festival. So something that the committee has, at least during my tenure and my interstate was for many years before, so it's kind of one of those sandy things that pop up every now and then. Um, so we're not going to solve that tonight, except maybe for the committee to talk about on how to kind of address that from, and how much we want to address that or want to get active in it. In the past, I don't type, and I don't know if it was Tyler or Jordan that was with me. We were kind of like, sorry, Mount Festival, we don't have the staff resources to run around all weekend and do, we're, we're helping you put on the festival. Um, but anyways, just something I thought I would flag for the group.
Just to comment, we were thinking of this particular provision as applying to the vendors who were legitimately in um,
Sure.
Whereas one of the things that was an aha, if you're in town selling unique thing, you need a business license. So if there's a pop-up, that would be a case where a business license would be required.
But I think what you'll find though is it's like six or seven are going to pop up. And then you've, you're running around and you know, how long are you worn in almost, it's only two day, two day festival, right?
It's, it's true.
And it's definitely something we can look further into. I think it's a good idea.
Um, I wanted to, I, I don't know if you got it to, but I also wanted to point out, we wanted to make sure people have access to who has a business license and they know where to find it. There's a listing, uh, but it has a way to address uh, uh, obnoxious door lockers that are coming by. They need to have a license or, or board.
All right. Um, another thing we wanted to address or the task force asked uh, step to address, which I think is a really, really good point that I never really thought about until we met. Um, I think uh, Councilor Sheldon mentioned this one, is that in chapter eight two-two, which is for chronic nuisances, currently it just has, uh, I think it's criminal violations listed. And we wanted to add more ability for the city manager or his or her desk knee to actually use other titles within the code to declare property as a chronic nuisance as well. So that'll be something we're, we'll be bringing forward to you in the next couple of months and working with our city attorney closely on. And then the last one on this page is the outdoor burning regulations, as we've already discussed. Um, one other thing I'll add in addition to what Counselor Smallwood said is like, yeah, she, she's way more of an expert on that than I am. But I think right now our code, that would be the only avenue is to let the fire department know there's a violation. They would then refer to DQ. I do believe, and obviously we'll talk to our attorney about this more before we bring it to you. Uh, but we've already been looking at it a little bit, is if we add more feet into it, just like we do in other titles across municipal code, I believe we could cite them for our fine schedule. Um, so I believe, I believe there's an app. What's that?
aggression does.
Yeah.
Others do.
That's correct.
So.
So you could cite them for burning?
For illegal burning or for not following the regulations that you choose to adopt as a council.
The DQ code, if I remember right, looking at it specifies that if you're within a city, there can be more strict stringent code.
That's what I recall reading as well, yeah. So this, I'm not going to go over all this, but Chris did a fantastic job of putting together um, this slide that shows the infraction procedures, and I'm just going to take one minute to look at it. As you'll see, you know, left of the dark green is kind of Chris's in the background, how Chris comes up if there's a violation or not. Once you hit the green area or the green column, that's basically the different um, municipal code infraction procedures that he has to go through. And so right now, um, there's at least eight or nine that he's identified and they all have varying fine amounts, different notification schedules, different follow-up inspection schedules. It gets, it's kind of a dizzying, confusing setup how it currently is, not only for Chris, who's trying to enforce it, but also for residents that, you know, if they get two violations, they might have different fine amounts, they might have different timelines, it's, it's very confusing. And so what Chris has done is set up a much more efficient way of having it a lot more simplified and having things a lot more streamlined in the same. So there'd be some variation still in how many days we had to follow up on inspections, primarily because of some things taking longer to come to compliance than other things. So obviously we'd give them more time on something like replacing a sidewalk panel that's broken than we would for trimming tall weeds. So that, that's why that would still have variance. But the citation issued and everything else would be the same, so to make it very um, similar across the board. And then Chris also went through, I, I don't know how many cities there are here, maybe twenty, twenty-five. Um, and went through and looked at what different cities across um, the county and then also other select cities that we chose to look at that we thought were somewhat similar to Sandy across the state. And we looked at what they charge for citations for um, the different violations. So I'm not, I wasn't planning on really going into this, but it just gives you a flavor for um, what we've been looking at. Um, and we're, you, we're using this table to compare and make sure we're not way higher or we're not an outlier compared to all the rest of the communities in Oregon. Uh, not to say that we want to be the lowest either, but we don't want to be the only one with say a ten thousand dollar fine on something when the next highest in the state is two thousand dollars.
So, quick question on, on that previous one, under number twelve, streets and sidewalks construction, and it goes right to a fine of less than a hundred dollars issued. What, what is that um, construction? I mean, somebody goes out and builds a sidewalk, is that the violation?
Which, I'm not sure which one.
It's in the middle there.
Uh, this slide here that I pulled back up.
Yeah, see, see where it says uh, in the second column that will, fine of less than a hundred dollars issued?
Twelve. Uh, it's the first twelve, not the first twelve.
Right.
Yeah, those are all.
The second.
Second twelve, no, second twelve.
Right.
Gosh, how many twelves are?
Yeah, the second twelve. It just says construction. And then, yeah, I just was curious what that was.
Honestly, I don't know which of the which that was, it's.
Twelve streets and sidewalks construction.
Yeah, queen sidewalk maintenance and streets.
Five, less than a hundred dollars issued. Yeah, I think that's construction uh, debris and stuff left in the street.
Oh, okay.
And on the sidewalk.
Okay, so sidewalk construction.
And then we find him a hundred dollars for that. Yeah.
Yes, thanks.
Currently.
Yeah, yeah.
Currently. It's not enough to make me not want to do it.
Exactly, that's exactly right.
That was, yeah.
That's the problem across the board, right? It's especially in some of these things that haven't been touched since the seventies, a hundred dollars in nineteen seventy-four is very different than a hundred dollars now. Um, so there's just not that deterrent factor that really should be there.
It's, and, and a great example that, and I'll say it because we're going to be changing it soon, but um, if you choose not to get a business license, uh, the fine amount is only like fifteen dollars more than just getting the business license. So there's not much of a deterrent for that.
They also get zeroed out. Like, like it was one of the things I learned during COVID. I was like, well, you know, what can we do to help these businesses? And it's like, can we make sure that they don't lose their business license? Because they were all afraid they're going to lose their business license. And there's no repercussion that not having your city a standing business license unless we, we decide to find you or take you to small claims court. And like, I don't know, as the committee looks into it and I saw other communities do it, but I'm like, we, we, we should encourage businesses to come online and we're going to make taxes, we're going to eventually make our, our Sandy transit fee off of that. Uh, it's certainly not worth it for us to make three hundred dollars off. And, and, and who here's ever started a small business? You're, you're, you're registering at the secretary of state, you got to get your logo, you got to get your website domain, you got to get your social. Maybe the city of Sandy should give you a break, right? And, and say, we want more small businesses to come online and we're not going to do it. So just something else for the committee, but.
We weren't addressing the price of a business. We were addressing the, they heard about if you not following these three things.
Yeah, please. And I hope going on the committee is taking this as some sort of like the recommendations and criticism. This is.
We're just looking at, we're going to write an ordinance, we need to have some teeth to it.
Yeah, totally.
Yeah.
Yep.
So um, just skipping ahead here to the proposed penalty updates. Um, as you can see on the left-hand column, what Chris put together is the different amounts that we currently charge. This, this kind of comes out of those other tables on the previous slides. And on the right-hand side is, side is what we're going to be proposing. And what you'll see here in the next few months is that we're going to have different classes and then we're going to have different amounts tied to those classes. So not everything will be fine the same, but it's all going to be fined based on these three class amounts instead of just varying amounts throughout the code. And so the, the, the class schedule on the right-hand side would be brought into chapter one point one eight. Um, and it would be for everything across the whole code. Um, with the exception, uh, well, everything across the whole code that development services enforces, with the exception of what I'm going to show in the next couple of slides here.
So what's the class C ones? Can you just kind of?
Um, I think the class C would be like a business license violation.
Or, or weeds.
Or weeds.
It was a small, a small like residential.
I'm sorry.
Like overgrown weeds or noxious vegetation. If it was a residential, one first offense.
Then the, the question I had on when I looked at this was ju- just like, is it, you know, per violation, you know, like if you know, if they don't get their weeds and then next month they, they haven't cut them again or something, how does that work?
The same processes currently where you, it's, you get one citation. If uh, whatever the time, usually it was a week. If you haven't done it again, you get a second violation and then you, the threat of it becoming daily.
And then what this would also allow us to do is if it's a second time offense for the same thing on the same property, it would bump you to the next class.
Right, but I think it's important to state that first notification has some period of time to remedy it, right?
Yeah.
You never hit them with a fine on day one, correct?
Never. There's a first notification, then there's an order, then there's a citation.
Yeah. And in, in almost all cases that I can think of too, unless it was something that was like immediate for safety reasons. You know, as long as the property owner is willing to call and work with Chris as well, we're very flexible on that timeline as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Quick question. Kind of along these lines, but so in, I'll use my neighborhood as an example. A lot of people have these giant maple trees in their front yards that over the years they've been wanting to take down because they're now taller than their house. Um, but I know a couple of my neighbors over the last two summers have put in to have those trees removed, but it's been four, five, six weeks before somebody from the city has gotten out so that they could get approval. So I would hope that if we're going to start increasing fine amounts, that we would also do our due diligence to be quicker at getting some of these issues resolved with our citizens as well.
Yeah, and there, there is a um, provision in our development code that if it is a real hazard tree, then you can actually remove it and apply within seven days for a um, for a tree removal permit. So, but yeah, I, I, point well taken, I, I agree.
We're looking for compliance and we put barriers in the way of people complying, that, that's going to go against what we're trying to achieve, so.
And, and there's no, um, like there's, these aren't annualized, you know, we get like three opportunities in one year and then it starts over again. This is just in the course of a business, doing business in a city.
I, oh, that's a really good point. I think we, I think in the code update, we, we would specify that. So it'd be within a certain period of time. So if it was, say, five years later, I wouldn't want that to bump it to the next infraction amount.
Yeah, I think we want to be fair, but at the same time, we don't want to, is to Don's point, which is the whole point of this, is not to just make it pencil out for someone to break our code, right?
Correct.
You know?
Yeah, so very good point. And then this would be the only thing that currently we're thinking would not fall under the fee schedule on the previous slide. And this would be for irreversible violations. And so what we're mainly thinking here is damaged or destroyed trees tied to development sites. So say a developer comes through for a subdivision approval, they get their approval and then they just start removing trees that were not allowed per the final order.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically. And so that would also apply to hillside disturbance and wetland disturbance. So those are the three things we're currently thinking. Um, as you can see on the left-hand side of the slide, um, trees on existing lots of record um, would still have the lower fine amount. And then trees with a development site, so with a final decision would have a much higher uh, violation. And that, and just to be fair to this slide, we have not had a chance to work through this with our attorney yet. Um, so there's probably going to be some kinks we had to work out there, but that's what we're kind of thinking on their irreversible violations. Um, and thi- this slide's kind of what triggered this whole project to begin with.
Right.
But was, was this very case.
Trees on existing lots? How long does it have to be in existing lot?
That will have to be defined when we write up the new code section. Yeah, so it would definitely have to be platted and it would probably have to be. Um.
You mean a developed lot?
Yeah.
So you should say that, yeah.
Well, this is, this is just for purposes of showing you guys what we're thinking. Obviously, the code would be very more flesh, would be much more fleshed out than this. Um, but yeah, it would, it would want to be on a lot that's been likely platted and that's actually went through a transition of ownership.
I was gonna say, at least the occupancy's been done.
Yeah. And yeah, like I said, this, this is going to be probably like four pages of text where this is trying to boil it down into one slide.
This goes back to why we were even thinking about maybe having some sort of an escrow deposit that the developers have to put up so that they know they're on the up for this and they don't have that skirt these.
Yeah.
Kelly, this would be an unfavorable topic, but just something I thought about. After the post that went out a couple of months ago about the city giving somebody a uh, uh, ultimatum to cut their weeds down. There's a lot of feedback on it. They talked about city properties not being well-maintained. So as, as you talk, talk to me about fines and I, I can see backlash from citizens saying that's, you're raising prices, but you don't take care of your own lands. And while I agree the fines probably need to come up, because it's been a long time since they've been updated. Is there a way to, in this, in this proposal you're writing, is a way to find ourselves? Um, if you're out doing?
What, what I would, what I would say, yeah, I don't think we can do that, but what I would say is that I think for that to occur, you would need to give Chris and I more authority to have other departments take care of their weeds in a more timely fashion. Because right now, what we, I mean, I'm analyzing their budget.
When Chief Husky stood up, I thought he was going to tell you.
Because I'm, I'm just going to be honest, right now we put it through a, a system. So if I see really bad weeds that the city next needs to take care, we put it into what's called our ma- maintain X. And then they get done whenever that department has time to get them done.
But you see my point.
I do see your point.
You go to somebody and tell them you need to cut your weeds down, but you can drive anywhere in town and find five lots of the cities that haven't been cut down in five weeks.
I hear it, I hear it all the time.
Right, and so, so I'm wondering how do, how do we do both? And in this case, I, you're not fighting yourself, but, but if I'm a citizen and I want to make a complaint about city hall not being maintained. And in this case, I get you're not finding yourself, but but if I'm a citizen and I want to make a complaint about city hall not being maintained. And I put that in and it goes in there, what happens to holding ourselves accountable to that same standard? You know, that we're going to ask the citizens to be held accountable to in the in the top.
I mean, in theory, we could cite ourselves. I'm sure there's not a legal precedent to say we can't cite ourselves. We haven't in the past. Um, I think one of the biggest issues from my vantage point is that we haven't built into our budget. Forever, good routine maintenance on our own property, not just from a standpoint.
That's an excuse. That's the kind of stuff that that our employees here. And they're out enforcing codes on businesses. They say, you know, COVID just went on. Have you looked at inflation? Have you looked at this economy? It's tough. We have a budgeted for it, Tyler. What's our, what's the city's response going to be to that business owner when they say they have a budgeted for it? Tough luck.
What, sometimes, yeah, and that should be the response to ourselves. And that's why in the next budget, you'll see. Uh, much more clearly allocated funding to take care of our green spaces and and visual. You know, I'm not talking about forty acres in a corner down by Sandy River, right? That's in sort of like the forest, but our visual. Green space and property needs to be maintained and we should hold ourselves accountable.
Been a concern of mine since the work session where we first kind of started going down this track. I've and it's just been warnings, so it's to, it's to councillor Maintenance's point, and that was brought up in our community. If we're going to enforce people to a standard, we better hold ourselves to that, to that same standard, or or we'll be pulled out for it and rightfully so, right?
And we certainly do with respect to building permits and sign permits and sign code and. Transit tax and a variety of other things, but there is some areas where we haven't in the past and that certainly should be addressed.
So I recommend, I finding one department to the other makes no sense to me, but. What does make sense is if a homeowner has a violation and they're made aware of it. How many time on before you cite them? How, what's their remediation time frame in general, like a week, two weeks?
Like ten days.
Ten days. This, if it's internal, you put it in this mate X or whatever it is, you got ten days. I think that's what's the fair part, right? You have to respond in the same timeframe as a homeowner or a business lawyer. To me, that's, that's the fair standard.
I'll just say that um, I think we've kind of set ourselves up for you can just more and more problems when we have our. Road code or road design code that says you're going to have all these islands in between all these roads. And then we don't have the staff in and the money to retain them. And I think we need to be. You know, being, you know, it's going to be hard enough to just take care of the ones we have and who's paying for that? Is that the street fund or, you know, it's not park? And so you you know, it's, I think we really do need to kind of look at re. And limiting those, those middle islands. And I know they're kind of fun and they, you know, parkways and all that, but. They, you know, this is Oregon and not Arizona or whatever. And so it's just hard to keep. Um, keep them maintained and expensive and, you know, either stuff is dying in them. Because not watered or they're going nuts, you know, and weeds and all that. So I'd like to see us consider that.
Well, so I agree with everything you said. Yeah, and so I think that's for council and probably for future uh, future council, maybe even. Um, and in goal setting, but I I would, I I think you guys should, I think the councils and mayor should consider a committee to do exactly that, so.
I'll add one thing real quick, which is uh, just a quick acknowledgement to our staff that do maintain those properties. And they do their best to do all the work and it's an ever growing list. And so I don't want that to also get.
Not at all.
Uh, ignore that.
We're not, we're, we're not allocating the proper amount of resources to them. It's, it's not about work.
And and I think it's important for citizens to recognize if I have something that's out of compliance. Whether my neighbor does or doesn't is no bearing on me being out of compliance.
Yeah.
I need to fix it. I need to get it back within compliance.
So I believe this is our last slide, but I don't remember if it is or not. It looks like a last slide, right? A next step slide. Um. So what we will be tackling. And the, this is not in any order. I I want to start with that, but we'll be tackling is removal of chapter one point one six. Um, modify heavily modifying the civil infraction procedure chapter, which is one point one eight. And that's, that's going to cover a lot of what we've been talking about as far as. Having the different citation schedule, having the repeat offender violations, having the irreversible. Or no, that won't have the irreversible violation section. Um, this will also cover a new and updated business license code that's based off of the League of Organ Cities model um, with some slight tweaks. It will also, will also be addressing the chronic nuisance chapter um, with giving the city manager or their designated more authority. And then also relating that to the other titles. We'll be tackling the outdoor burning chapter. Uh, which is eight point three six. And then as I believe. Scheduled next month, I'll be bringing the sign code chapter to you at a work session. Um, that's going to be a thrill. Um, just start going through that chapter. It hasn't been touched, I don't believe, in about fifteen years. And it's, it's, it's due. And then uh, in twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six, we're going to be. Bringing forth the irreversible violations and also the tree code chapter. And the reason why the irreversible violations, I don't believe we can get before you this year. Is I think it's just going to take too much research and time with our attorney's office. You know, that could change if we talk to the city attorney and there's a easier path forward on that. Uh, but otherwise it won't be until next year sometime.
Is there, I mean, are there other cities that already have it in place and so it's not quite so?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, there are some cities that have.
Like Swego has some.
Yeah, but uh, yeah, there, there is this one, one thousand dollars per one inch. So if you have a forty eight inch diameter tree, it's a forty eight thousand dollar fine. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend going that route.
There's an in between.
Exactly, there has to be an in between.
Fifty cents an inch. Hey, can I, can I add one thing? When you do that outdoor burning, if you could tie that, the regulations around it to the um, fire danger code. I think that would be uh, super helpful and applicable. So essentially almost working with the fire department, fire marshal to make a determination on. On when and then thus giving you the teeth to enforce that.
Is that the um, the regulations on when you can burn?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, our, our plan with that chapter was to get the two fire marshals heavily involved. Um, and give them an opportunity to add or subtract things out of there.
Well, well, thank you guys. Uh, there, I do have input.
Um, there was one more slide.
Yes, there is. Um. I uh, I know there's um, first of all, great job. I love this. I. Chris, I just got nothing but praise from you and what you've done. Putting all this together was huge and well, you know, well done and very badly needed. Um, so thrilled with that. One of the things that also comes up is um, trespasses that we've had. Where people have built into uh, city lands that I'm aware of. And um, so if, you know, as you kind of. Pro- propose these, I'm not sure what part of the code that is in and whether it's comes in the irreversible part or what. But, you know, we've already had a couple of those come up, but I know of at least two others that are are out there and, you know, I'm. It's, you know, so I'd like to see us kind of include that to make sure that we're. Able to to take action there because it, the last time it was kind of a crap shoot, just like what should we do and? How much time and, you know, should we sell them the land and, you know? Oh, it was kind of not very clear as to what we should do, and I hope we can incorporate that here.
And yeah, that's a great point. I think, I think that's something we should look to tackle in these.
And then I would just say that I would love to see the same process done for the. Um, you know, uh, Officer Moody's, you know, the the other uh, infractions, so that 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 need for kind of that equity and. And enforcement and all, um, just so that we have, you know, that process identified. Love to see that. Thanks.
That overhaul of one point one eight will bleed over.
Yeah.
And that'll be the start of implementing those over there.
Thanks, thank you, Steph, for your work on this. Thank you, councillors Hockenson, Maintenance and Smallwood for your work on the committee. And uh, no, Sheldon.
I'm me.
Uh, and with that, let's try to get back in here for the council meeting at seven fifteen.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, united in the physical with liberty and justice for all. All right, well, welcome everybody. Um, I always start off the meeting with the review of tonight's agenda. And we will be uh, calling for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. Uh, expecting none, we'll go to public comment. I do have the one that was submitted earlier online. Is there any more that's been submitted?
Nothing else, sir.
All right, thank you, Jeff. With that, we'll move ahead. There's no um, response to previous comments as it's already been completed. We'll go to our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from our September sixteenth meeting. And our presentations will have a police staffing uh, study results. Well, we'll have a presentation of the results for police staffing study, or like it. And their ordinances, a public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty four dash eighteen, which is. The hopeful adoption of our comprehensive master plan, the vision Sandy twenty fifty plan. And our new business, we have the contract approval for engineering services for the older creek water treatment plant upgrades. As well as review of applications for the appointment to to the vacant city council seat number five. Will then round off our evening with a report from our city manager as well as our committee and council reports. With that, Jeff, will you please call the roll for this evening?
Yes, councillor Mead.
President.
Councillor Smallwood.
Here.
Councillor Sheldon.
Here.
Councillor Walker.
Here.
Councillor Hockenson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. Good for that, Jeff. With that, I will call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. Very men, I'll move ahead to public comment. As I mentioned earlier, we do have a submitted um, public comment online. Uh, subject matters, a moratorium update from a Joseph Gambino. Um, he submitted his address to everything. He lives uh, on Marmot Road in Sandy and has a small business here in Sandy. With that, is he, he was planning on um, participating through telephone. Think he needs to probably dial the star nine button in order to participate, but do you have him, Jeff?
I do see the phone number being provided to me, so uh, Mr. Gambino, you should be able to. Uh, unmute yourself now and you'll have three minutes. Go ahead, please.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, welcome.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, Mayor Stan. Uh, Mary Pulliam. Uh, so um, I cannot propose a motion, but what I would like to do is. Try to compel the city council or anybody else who can propose a motion to do so, and I'll explain what I am seeking. Um, as you guys introduced me, uh, my name's Joseph Gambino. I own a business that is in rural Clackamas County that manufactures tools. And I have purchased about two acres of industrial zone two property. Within the city of Sandy. It's near Fred Meyer. And my plan is to develop it for my tool manufacturing company. Which would create enough space for up to forty living wage permanent full time jobs in Sandy. The problem with this development is like all other development, it requires plumbing permits, which includes sewer and there are none available. So Sandy has approved about four hundred and fifty one effective residential units. And I need about five to build this development. There are some developers who might be able to give me ERUs. But the problem is the current moratorium only allows those ERUs to be transferred within the same use. So residential to residential. As far as I know, every single one of those four hundred and fifty one ERUs are allocated to residential development. Nothing is commercial or industrial. So I cannot get any that are in the correct category for my development, which is of course. Permanent job creation, industrial development, which is part of the statewide and city economic development plans. Um, more so than residential development. So what I would like to propose is that somebody get onto some type of vote or process. A method to revise the moratorium before it is extended to allow. Traded ERUs to change type. And if that has to be restricted to only types that are better for statewide economic development goals. That is okay because that would serve my need. Hopefully that makes sense. If anybody has questions about that, I'm happy to clarify.
Uh, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, it's funny we know each other personally, Joey, Joe, Mr. Gambino, whatever. Um. Uh, Tyler, um, I know that you, there's been some staff work on this and stuff. Did you want to provide some kind of comments or?
Sure, and all of that, Kelly, um, up to providing additional, fill in any holes that I leave you with. Um, I sent an email out to the council on Friday just sort of preparing. You may get some public comment tonight. Um, specifically around uh. Either alternative treatment systems or modification to the moratorium to allow for some of that shifting of ERUs. Um, you know, staff certainly would like to see any sort of economic development opportunities continue to move forward in advance. Um, but obviously the moratorium limits us with that availability right now as it's written. And so there are two um. Paths forward at this point, really. One is modifying the moratorium to allow for some of that ERU shuffling. Um, trading from another uh, developer that has out allocated ERUs. The other alternative would be um, an alternative treatment system solution. And Kelly can speak more on what that would actually look like, Kelly, if you want to.
Yeah, and and I would say you could, if you choose to give staff direction on it, we could move forward with both. There's nothing limiting that. Um, so if if we want to, I'll first tackle the first thing, if we want to. Modify or pass a new moratorium with more loose regulations around ERU transfer. I think we would need direction on that tonight, and that's because. We have to send a notice to the state next by next Friday. So that would give uh, Josh and myself a little bit of time to work together to create something else for um. That state notice that's required by next week. And then on October twenty first.
Is it the renewal?
Uh, that's because the six month renewal process, that's correct. Thank you, Jeff. And then on the alternative um, treatment systems, that's something that um, I've been talking to Mr. Gambino and actually Mr. Brad Picking as well. Um, he has a site right across the street from Mr. Gambino's. Um, so that will be something that I will be bringing forward to you on October twenty first already. So we do, we do have that kind of in the, in the works already to kind of talk to the city council more on that idea. And to ask if you guys want us to proceed with uh, writing up an ordinance.
A couple of things. First on, I'm going to tackle the second issue because I feel it's a little easier than the first, so we'll start there. Um, because it was, and I, we, it may came from you, Kelly, a conversation we had, but it was kind of being talked about on those properties over off Bell Street, three sixty second that we talked so much about, but. Maybe developing and maybe this stuff for the Economic Development Committee to talk about, and that may be where this tree and the ERUs thing sets up, I don't know, but. What we had talked about is, is if, for example, we had some sort of development or some sort of business that wanted to come in and it was really the moratorium that was stopping them. If maybe similar to what we did with the facade improvement program or what we've done, we're using urban renewal with uh. Outdoor cover structures, it was reimbursed by AFP program. Um, maybe we can do a program that would help pay for some of these alternative treatment systems. That could help bring some of these businesses online and help them with the cost. And the hindrance of the cost of these alternative treatment systems to be able to help these businesses during the moratorium. And of course, you know, you develop a program like that, you can make it specific to certain types of businesses and everything else. But, you know, the the eye towards it being, if there truly is, you know, a business, especially of substantial size that meets. The council and the community's vision for what we want to bring in, let's give ourselves tools to be able to help these businesses come on. If it truly is a hindrance, put in one of these systems. I don't know how expensive these systems are. You may say they're twenty bucks fair and it doesn't matter. I, my guess is it's not twenty bucks. Um, but so on that, and then on the ERU trading, so you're telling me. So right now, if somebody loses their ERU, it just goes back to the group, right? It just goes back to the ERU. It's cool.
Yeah, so I thi- I think what Mr. Gambino is proposing, and I've heard it from at least one other person out there as well, is. They could potentially buy ERUs from somebody that's already had them allocated. Unfortunately, with how the moratorium is currently written, or fortunately, however you want to look at it. They, they can't do that if the use is different.
Right, and if the person, but if a person isn't going to use their ERUs, what happens to those ERUs at this point?
Eventually, after one year, they would be returned to the pool unless they, unless they apply for.
Or sell.
Or if they sell them, correct?
Right, that's kind of where I'm going, like under this program. And so then you, you allow people who have waited in line for. And we've kind of gone out of our way as a city and as a council to help some of those folks who've been waiting in line. You're telling me if their development doesn't or a portion of their development doesn't. You're telling me if their development doesn't, or a portion of their development doesn't go forward, this program would allow them to just sell those on the open market? I'm just trying to.
Um, it's sort of a transfer program that is typically, well, this is all hypothetical because I think we'd be the first ones in the state of Oregon to ever allow it, but yes, that is what would happen.
So I just want to point out, when we first talked on the last moratorium with the provision to transfer from one property to another, I brought this up. That fear was that it would become a marketable commodity, the ERU. And I strongly suspect there's a whole lot of regulation around offering marketable commodities that goes well beyond our normal um oversight. Yeah, and I don't, I don't think we should be in that business. I think, I I thought when we were doing this, we were going to hold back some for these sorts of things. It sounds like they're gone. There was no holdback. We just gave them out, so.
Well, let me correct that. We didn't, we didn't give them out. People had to apply and they had to have a previous land use approval.
Right.
And then we allocated them to people already with land use approvals. So we, we, I just want to make it clear, we haven't given them to anybody. They purchased them essentially because they had land use approvals.
And they're in line.
Correct.
Right. They're in line. They have them. So, and I I'm still against turning these into a marketable commodity. I think that's a mistake. I think it was a mistake to even allow them to transfer from one property to the other.
The thing that um, that's mine for me because a lot of the folks on bluff road and some, some other folks, um, I think up on highway twenty six, I, I, I don't exactly know exactly how many or what, but there's a lot of folks that still have septic fields in Sandy, including um, you know, a lot of folks on bluff road. So my, and and what I've been told is that, you know, do, you know, if your septic system fails or whatever, the cost for hooking up to the system can be forty to eighty thousand dollars.
And I'm sorry, it seems like the systems I'm talking about from that conversation, they can go right into the system now, so.
But, hold on. So my point is, is that we have saved, what, nine ERUs out for uh failing septic systems, right?
No, it's less than that. It's like six.
Okay, six, excuse me. So, but my point is, is that we're proposing um these guys to get, you know, their sewer right there in the road. I mean, for, for them to hook up to. It's just the moratorium that's stopping that. Whereas for the other homeowners, you know, they don't have forty to eighty thousand dollars to have to, you know, build, you know, what quarter mile or a thousand feet or whatever it is to go hook up to a, a sewer system that's, you know, housed, you know, several homes away. And so what I would, you know, rather see is that we allow them to go ahead and rebuild their existing septic system if they can to meet the code and then require these, you know, allow, then transfer those ERUs to allow these guys to just go ahead and hook up to sewer that's in the street, which would be cheaper for them too. I mean, be cheaper for both.
Yeah, a re- a replacement system, I actually just checked into this recently. It costs about twenty six thousand dollars. A sand filter replacement system costs about thirty six thousand, but it is still a substantial cost. Um, so far, we've denied every one of the hookup requests, and so far, to my knowledge, the county is allowing every one of those septic tanks to be replaced.
And and so tell me, council, if I'm speaking out of line, challenge me, but I, I don't think we're going to have consensus to be able to apply to the state for a program that'd be first of its kind tonight, to provide that, that direction. And my personal viewpoint on both that issue, just that conversation, where it might or might not go, as well as the septic tank deals, is maybe let's put it to the Economic Development Committee. And especially on, should we, you know, is there some sort of program or what should we be doing to help out some of these commercial properties that have, or find themselves in these situations? To me, that's a problem looking for a solution, and that's why we have the Economic Development uh committee. Does that sound like a reasonable path forward to everybody's?
This is outside the urban renewal?
Uh, well, I mean, it's, it's right outside, correct. Yeah, so that makes sense to me.
I think so, isn't he?
Yeah. Well, I, I don't, I don't know.
This is not a.
Well, the, the economic development can always ask for, you know, recommend some to urban renewal. All right, so let's do that path forward.
Yeah.
Did you have another?
I, I mean, what I was going to say is, I would, if, if you would entertain me, I would still like to bring together what we've prepared on the twenty first to get kind of, to talk about this a little bit more and get your blessing to move forward and give Josh and I direction on.
Well, I, I guess I don't understand what you're.
On the alternative systems.
Well, yeah, but is that, I, I, I guess I'm a little bit concerned about that because, you know, are we, that's, is that what we're doing with Bell Street? I mean, it's.
No, that's, that's.
That's from years ago.
That's what the discussion on the twenty first would be to.
System of a cesspool pump out or is it a treatment?
There's a lot of.
That's what we, that's, yeah, and that's what we, that's what we, no, I do know, but that's what we had covered at the meeting.
Are you bringing it into the council or to a work session or what? It doesn't matter. We could. Are you, you're not looking for a decision that night or on Sunday or?
No, I'm just, I'm just looking to see if you guys want us to spend more staff and attorney time on.
Yeah, it sounds like we'd want to have that conversation.
But is this just for this one landowner or for what we're doing?
The alternative treatment solution was a, an idea for anyone in this position, not specifically for this landowner.
Yeah, it's, it's going to have to be applicable to a broader class of.
But it.
New subdivisions?
No, 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 no.
But.
No new residential. It'd be employment opportunities.
Commercial development for employment.
Well, and this i- industrial.
It'd be more so.
Yeah.
Sure, sure, you're thinking zoning, I'm just thinking business.
Yeah, but same thing.
So, but it sounds like for my benefit and Josh's benefit that there's no consensus or desire for us to bring forth a modified moratorium at this time.
Dealing, dealing specifically with ERU transfers.
Yes, with the request that was made tonight.
And not at, not at this time, but it, it could possibly be something that could be explored in the city in the future, but I don't see any consensus to do that.
Shorten the timeframe so that they come back into the pool faster. I mean, I'm open to that.
I think we got to continue to look at the allocation of ERUs.
Yeah. And Josh, just for the, for the record, we'll just renew the existing moratorium. If we want to make a modification, we'll just go through the normal process. And we could do that in three months, six months, and we can modify the ERU or the moratorium anytime.
You can modify it anytime. This is just an opportunity because you still touch it.
Yeah.
Anyway, that if you were going to change it, it'd be a logical time to do it.
Exactly.
It doesn't block you at all.
Patrick. All right, let's move ahead. Thank you so much for the testimony and for the staff time on that. Appreciate it, everybody. All right, why don't we go ahead and uh move ahead to our consent agenda that has our city council meeting minutes from our Sep- September sixteenth meeting. Let's search conversation. I'll entertain a motion for adoption.
And moving to adopt the consent agenda.
Second, it's a motion by Councilor Hockenson and a second by Councilor Sheldon to adopt a consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes. Motion carries. All right, ahead to presentations. We've got the results of the police staffing study.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, just as a brief overview, during the last budget process, uh, the council allocated thirty thousand dollars to conduct a police staffing study. Um, city uh entered into an agreement with Barry Dunn to have that study completed. Started about a year ago. Um, there was some uh, community outreach, a couple of council members that were involved in that process as well, and then interviews with some staff um from the police department. And tonight we have Michelle, and Michelle, I'm going to butcher your last name, I apologize, uh, Wen- Wenzel? Close?
Close enough.
Close enough? Okay, we'll go with that. Michelle from Barry Dunn is here this evening to present the results of that uh staffing study, the recommendations that come out of that, and then answer any questions related to um, those results and recommendations. So with that, I'll just turn it over to you, Michelle.
Perfect. And just a question, do you have the slide deck queued up or do you need?
Uh, we have it. I can certainly pull it up and click through it if you would like to just tell me next slide.
I'm happy to do that. That'd be great.
Yeah. Just give us one second, Michelle.
Perfect.
Right.
Next one.
Looks like we're ready for you. Looks like we've got the slide up and ready to go for it.
Yeah, perfect. So just real quickly, we're gonna, I'm just gonna lead you through an introduction about what we do. Uh, kind of uh talk a little bit about our methodology, what that looks like, what we looked at, uh, patrol investigations and other positions, and then uh cover some key recommendations. And then there'll be some time for questions if anybody has any. So if you want to go to the next slide. So real quickly, um, from a patrol standpoint, one of the easiest, this is, what we do is we do a workload analysis. The best way to do that is to gather a bunch of data. Uh, the best data that's available is within your computerated dispatch and your records management systems. Uh, computerated dispatch are the records that are ge- basically generated within the communication center uh, when uh your resources are dispatched to calls for service. We do a very in-depth analysis of CAD data, but we also look at uh individually held data within your record system that you have, which it's categorization of call for service types and so forth. Uh, we also had a number of different worksheets and other instruments that we advanced to the police department to complete. Um, and we used the combination of those things, and again, as mentioned, uh, we did do interviews with a number of folks within the department and some community folks as well. As I mentioned, we did a, a significant anal- analysis of the data. I'm going to show you a little bit of that in just a minute. Uh, but I do want to talk briefly about the workload model. The workload model, as you see, it's thirty, 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 ten. What that really means is at any given time, at any given point in a officer's day, the expectation is the officer would spend no more than thirty percent of their time either on their way to or on a call for service. The next thirty percent relates to administrative workload, which is things like uh filing reports, putting evidence away, uh, doing follow-up reports, emails, those kind of things. Um, the last, there, the, the next thirty percent and really the next forty percent is all about having discretionary time available to do self-directed work, community policing, or even directed patrols. But the, the, the neck, the crux of this is that, well, the pivotal point is that thirty percent uh obligated workload, or that is workload where officers are either on their way to or on a call for service. That really is the national standard in terms of uh the amount of encumbered time officers should have. If you want to go down to the next slide. Um, one of the things that's a misconception is that we expect that our employees work two thousand and eighty hours a year, when in fact, they really work, they get paid for two thousand and eighty. But uh generally speaking, most people only work somewhere around eighteen hundred and fifty or so. Um, as it comes down to uh police officers and patrol officers in particular, we show you this slide. What you can see here is that the average officer within Sandy is actually on duty doing patrol services approximately sixteen hundred hours a year, which is a little bit lower than um, what our prior study averages have been. Um, we did note that your training, uh, total training hours are a little bit higher per officer, which is not, not a bad thing. Obviously, training is a good thing and, and uh it helps you uh avoid liability. But it's important to understand that the thirty percent then is based off of that fifteen hundred and eighty eight number. It's not thirty percent of two thousand and eighty. So you can scroll down. By the way, I forgot to mention, I'm going to violate all kinds of PowerPoint rules here. This is a, a very busy slide, and I'm not going to try to walk you through all of it, but I do want to just call out uh some categories. When we look at obligated workload and we talk about the thirty percent, we're talking about community-generated calls for service. That is, someone from your community picked up the phone uh and called or summoned an officer to do work. Officer-initiated activity like traffic stops and things of that nature, it is workload, but it's not obligated. In other words, um, it's discretionary. That is, the officer wouldn't necessarily have to do it. But obligated workload, when the police are summoned, generally speaking, the officers do have to respond to that. Um, what you'll see at the very top of this is that within the community-generated workload volume, we have about twenty four hundred hours, twenty four, forty five. Uh, but you, you'll also see that in the supplemental patrol section, there's about another six hundred and forty hours. Uh, we call that supplanting volume. That is, uh, those are officers within the department that aren't routinely assigned to go to or respond to calls for service, but they do so either because they happen upon something or perhaps uh, the officers need assistance, uh, something like that. But what, when that happens, what they do is effectively artificially reduce the workload for patrol. Uh, we call that supplanting. In your case, there's a, there's actually a fairly substantial amount of supplanting hours in this data set. About seventeen point six two percent of the total volume of activity for workload is actually supplanting activity. In other words, the six hundred and forty one hours really ought to be up in the patrol section, but uh either because officers are busy or because of staffing shortages, et cetera, uh, other folks within the organization had to respond to those things. And it's important to note that when you look at those hours in the supplemental patrol section, that means that a lot of folks that were responding to those calls weren't doing the things that are their primary duties and responsibilities. Uh, things like sergeants who should be supervising and school resource officers who should be working within the schools and so forth. But this is an important number because it really drives the data analysis for understanding how many officers you need to manage patrol workload volumes within your community. Scroll down, please. This just shows the percentage of community-generated volume versus officer-generated volume. In this case, it's about two-thirds uh officer uh community-generated. Uh, this does range in the different studies that we do, but a two-third, a community volume and a third uh officer volume is a, is a reasonable balance in terms of utilization for your patrol staff. Scroll down, please. Now, this is a very important slide because it shows when your, when your calls for service come in during the day. Um, and you'll see the blue bar reflects uh the volume from the community, and the green bar reflects officer-initiated activity. Uh, this pattern, which has a, the dip in service hours uh around four or five o'clock in the morning, and the peak volume around seven or eight o'clock at night is typical in basically all the studies that we uh, that we work on. Uh, but it is important because it helps us understand the need for us to staff across the hours of the day and not just during a specific section of the day. Next slide, please. This is just another vantage point to look at this data, and for, for your department, it's particularly relevant because if you look at the sections of the day, you'll see that in the morning hours, you have about fifty-two percent of your volume. Uh, overnight or in the late hours, you have about forty-eight percent. In the middle, where the purple is, you have about sixty percent. And for your organization, um, again, all of these percentages are important, but again, that peak volume is what drives the need to have um the suitable, a suitable number of staff working uh in the, during the, that peak volume area. But also for your community, uh, there's a need for you to staff really twenty-four hours a day with, with two officers. If you could scroll down. One of the other things that organizations often uh neglect to look at is, is leave usage. And what this shows, the blue bar here shows voluntary leave usage uh for officers uh between annual leave time, holiday and comp time used. And this is because that line is not straight across the, across the months of the year, it makes it more complicated to, to staff police departments and to consistently keep that staffing without the use of overtime. Uh, a lot of that can be done through modified patrol schedule designs, but the bottom line is just to recognize that this is a um, it's a factor in understanding how to balance the distribution of your personnel across the calendar months. Next slide. Uh, this is another really good slide to look at, and what you see, there's really two tables here. The top section is your police department. The bottom section is a, is a combination of many different projects that uh I've studied uh over the last several years. What you can see here is that when we look at the percentage of volume uh of service, you can see that uh your crime numbers are actually a little bit lower comparatively. Uh, you have a, your highest volume is in the straight in the service area. Uh, your percentages of time kind of track with those. But, but a really important number is the, the amount of time you're spending per call for service. And the numbers that we see within your crime service and traffic cat- categories are very comparable, particularly in the crime and service areas, which are really um, again, very, very close to the study averages. In other words, what that tells us is that your department is operating uh essentially in the same uh level of efficiency as what we see across other organizations, even much, much larger organizations. Next slide, please.
Yeah, I'll give you a show.
What's that?
You have a question for the council?
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, um, can you just clarify for me? I, I understand what the crime is and the traffic, but what all is included in the service?
Sure, that's a really good question. Um, but let me, let me um, break this down. Um, this is a little different than reporting, state or national reporting. We consider anything criminally charged, even within your city ordinances, to be a crime. So you, any misdemeanor that you would have. Would be considered a crime. Um, that, that could include things like even uh, an animal at large, if that's a misdemeanor violation. Um, service, now let me back up. Traffic in this case is not traffic stops. This is community-generated volume. When we talk about traffic here, we're talking about traffic hazards, roadway hazards, objects in the roadway. Uh, traffic complaints. This is citizen-generated traffic um, volume. The service volume basically is everything else from alarm calls to uh, attempt to locate or. Um, anything that might, in, anything that might involve a, a service-related response. Disorderly, a disorderly person or a disturbance, for example. Um, a loud noise, a suspicion, those types of things. So uh, service tends to be for, for. Most police agencies tends to be the largest category of a volume. But as you can see, even in your data, um, the amount of time spent. On service calls is much, much lower as we would expect. Because typically, uh, those things can be dealt with relatively quickly, whereas for criminal incidents, uh, it, it requires investigative effort. And collecting evidence and so forth, so.
So, so an officer-initiated traffic stop, which category would that fall into?
That does not fall into these tables at all because that was officer-initiated volume. Uh, so it doesn't, it is not part of the obligated work analysis that, that we're talking about. If you recall. The first big data table that I showed you split out the volume and officer-initiated volume. So it's not reflected in this table. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the things that we look at is understanding how many people does it take to fill a shift? We call it a shift relief factor calculation. Uh, the way that we do that is understanding, we look at your shift hours, which in your case, your department's on twelve-hour shifts. Uh, what that, what we look at is if we were to staff one twelve-hour shift per day for three hundred and sixty-five days. Uh, that would be four, three hundred and eighty hours. Uh, that means with, and when we divide that by the amount of available hours that your officers have, which is that fifteen hundred and eighty-eight hour. Number that I showed you before, what it tells us takes two point seven-six people. To uh, to equal one shift across um, across the entire calendar year. So. Uh, in order, if, if we're going to, as we are, recommend staffing four daily shifts. That means it's going to take you about eleven personnel, eleven, eleven dedicated patrol officers. To staff that consistently. And that, and again, this math takes into account. Uh, leave time and um, and those patterns that we showed in the, in that fifteen hundred and eighty-eight hours as the baseline for available time. Next table, please. Next slide. This is another really important slide and what it shows here is we've, we've kind of broken out your call for service volume. Based on what you've currently been doing for shifts at the top. If you look at the center section where the light blue numbers are. Um, if we look at those exclusively and we look only at the data, the data from. You know, six AM to one PM and the data from one AM to six AM only justifies one officer. But given a number of factors for your community, it really doesn't make sense for you to only staff one officer during those periods. Uh, distance to the jail, you know, a number of other factors. You certainly don't want to leave your community unprotected. Um, so. Um, your volume, your peak volume, as I showed you in the table with the hours on it, comes in the middle of the day. And that, that peak volume justifies a minimum of two officers. Um, what, what you see, what you see at the bottom of this table in the orange is the distribution of personnel. That maintains two, um, two shifts uh, during the uh, six AM to six PM and two shifts from six PM to six AM. Uh, the number of personnel is the same as the light blue, but they're distributed differently. And it also helps you ensure that you have two personnel working across uh, the entire shift day. Next slide, please.
Let me ask a question, please.
Yeah.
Does this account for supervisors that are working as well, or is this strictly just officers?
This is strictly patrol personnel. Again, your supervisors are effectively additional personnel that are there to. Administrative workloads and burden and supervise personnel. They certainly can and do. Any assist on calls, but their primary focus is to be supervisors.
Can you slide back one table for me, please? I apologize for not asking it earlier. Right there. When you say uh, number of daily shifts, or are you talking four different shifts, or are you talking?
No, that means.
Twenty-four hours a day.
That means four, that means four actual people scheduled per day, not four separate shifts. So you, if you go to the next table, you'll see the number four. Two-day shift cars, two-evening cars equals four. That's the same reference.
Thank you.
Hmm? And next, one of the things that we wanted to look at, and I know that your community is growing, is we looked at future workload projections. Uh, one of the big no-no's in our world is looking at uh, per thousand ratios. We don't use that terminology. Because workload volumes can vary. Uh, a, a population of a thousand people in one community may generate X volume. Versus in another community, it might generate Y volume. Uh, in your case, we've calculated. The, the workload volume based on your population and we can use that number to extrapolate and look at future um. Staffing demands even based on community growth. And what we show here is that. Uh, at the top of the chart where you have a base population of roughly thirteen thousand, uh, you had eight patrol. We, we've suggested you move to eleven. Um, what that means is that even when we get, even if you get down to. At twenty-thirty with a projection of fourteen thousand, three hundred people, you still would not uh, increase your workload volumes or your. Daily obligated workload needs past the eleven patrol staffing position. In other words, uh, with, by adding the folks that we've recommended, you should have stability at least out to twenty-thirty. Unless you were to grow substantially beyond this number, or unless you were to bring in a category of um. Housing or people, whatever that, that drove your uh, per capita workload volumes uh, in a, in a really. Uh, substantial way, which would be very unlikely. Effectively, what this means is based on our recommendations, uh, you should not need to add staffing for some time, probably a decade beyond what we've recommended. Next slide, please. So really, um, very quickly, uh, key recommendations here, add three sworn positions for patrol. There is a piece called solvability factors that we highlighted in the report. And effectively, this has to do with understanding what the key factors are to the potential for cases to be solved. It's a data collection element that happens during the preliminary investigation phase with police officers. And what it does is it helps contribute to an understanding of whether the case is worth. Uh, pursuing the likelihood of possibly solving the case as opposed to pursuing a case that. Really has no effective leads and, and will essentially use resources without uh, the likelihood of producing a result. So uh, there is a method to that and we've recommended that they, that the uh, police department incorporate the use of solvability factors into their. Uh, preliminary investigations for patrol officers. Uh, next section relates to investigations and similar to patrol, we look at uh, we look at quantifiable metrics. Number of caseloads or a number of the types of cases. We look at the personnel data. Obviously, we did interviews, made observations. We also did a survey to those who do investigations to report back some data. Uh, for us, uh, based on uh, some survey models that we've used and prior data that we've collected. Next slide, please. Uh, like the patrol officers, this slide shows the amount of time available for investigators. You can see this is a little bit higher. Um, about sixteen hundred and forty hours available for investigators. Again, this is compares relatively similar, similarly to prior studies uh, that we've conducted. Um, and essentially, again, this is the baseline sixteen hundred and forty hours of what your investigators have available to them. The next slide, please. Now, there's a couple of different tables here. The first one shows the number, the number of cases assigned uh, by uh, two investigations. Uh, by year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, uh, two-year average is around forty. There is a little bit of a reduction over the two years. Um, essentially, in the lower table, the table three point five. What this shows is uh, you have a one detective, the annual number of cases is forty-three. Um, the monthly average is about four. We look at their hours available at sixteen forty. That's roughly a hundred and thirty-six hours per month available for case investigation or roughly. Forty hours of actual investigation time, which is a very high number. Um, it's, it's not overkill certainly, but in some cases are more complex than our others. But having roughly forty hours of potentially available time uh, on average per case. Uh, suggests that there is sufficient time available to investigators, uh, to the investigator to uh, manage the caseload. Next slide, please. So again, there's really no apparent need to expand investigation staffing. Um, we did note um, a, a schedule, a little bit of a schedule anomaly. Uh, with the use, with the particular schedule for investigations and we will, we certainly are recommending that the. Uh, hours of the investigator be adjusted to um, track with traditional business hours. There are many. Uh, types of investigations that require specific contact with other government, governmental and business entities. That are more conducive to operating during a standard business timeframe. Uh, there was a lieutenant position, not a hundred percent sure what the status of that position is, but. Um, it would, it would be a benefit to the organization to move supervision uh, over investigations to lieutenant position if that, if that still exists within the organization. Uh, next slide. Um, one of the other pieces that we talked about is the authorized hiring level. Um, police departments are notorious for this and oftentimes do not account for attrition. And so from our, from our standpoint, your ma- your minimum uh, effective or appropriate effective level. Of sworn staffing is nineteen. Um, you have an annual estimated attrition rate of one. Uh, and so it's our recommendation, you set a authorized hiring level at twenty for the organization, nineteen. And one of the things that is often missed as it relates to police hiring. Is that from the point that someone leaves your organization to the point that you're able to bring in a new uh, police officer. Uh, get them through the academy, get them trained, get them on the street, get them streetworthy. It generally takes roughly about a year. And so um, it, it works against optimal and effective staffing levels. To have the department operating uh, below that uh, optimal level effectively continuously. Because if you, if you're not hiring ahead of your attrition, you're always going to be playing catch-up. And your department's always going to be working short. And of course, that drives overtime. Uh, and it also makes it more complicated to manage and balance staffing levels. And that's particularly. More difficult in organizations, uh, than smaller organizations that have a smaller patrol pool. When the loss of a cert- of, of a single individual can have a pretty dramatic on, uh, on the ability of the department to staff. Uh, next slide, please. So uh, just kind of real briefly, uh, overall summary and sworn staffing summary. We did look at the records division. There's sufficient staffing there. Uh, patrol division, as we've said, would benefit from three additional members. We don't expect that uh, even, even considering anticipated growth with the city in the next ten years, we don't expect that would ex- extend. Uh, workload volumes to a level that would require additional staffing. Uh, mentioned, uh, moving the lieutenant position to take a more active role in investigations assignment and management. Uh, and again, uh, we're not recommending an additional person to the uh, investigations division. And scroll down if you would.
Um, another question?
Yep.
Kind of go back up the two slides, uh, right there, yeah, authorized for hiring. Okay. You said additional sworn staffing, you know, you were recommending three more officers. And you've got the attrition rate and then you've got, you know, going from sixteen to twenty, which is four.
Right. So what we're suggesting, what we're suggesting is that you should be hiring at twenty in order to staff nineteen. Because you're consistently losing a person every year and it takes a year to get the person uh, up and running. Really, your operational level, um, if you were stable and no one was leaving your department, nineteen would be fine. But that's just not the case and it's not going to stay the case. You're going to, you have a consistent and you're going to have. Most likely, a consistent attrition rate of at least one. Um, and again. Um, because of the way police departments typically hire, what that means is if you don't hire above. The number of nineteen, you're always going to be operating at eighteen, which is not optimal and doesn't align with the staffing recommendations. So essentially, it's a, it is a, um, it's a budget allocation. Um, but your department most likely would never get to twenty, or if you did, there may be some overlap, uh, but it would likely be brief. And certainly that's something to monitor. Uh, you know, if, if you ended up hiring a twentieth person. Uh, and you had no attrition or you were in the process and you identified someone, there was no attrition. You could certainly put that position on hold and not hire the person. But the uh, oftentimes communities refer to this as over hires. Uh, authorizing someone to hire over the authorized number, uh, which runs into complications when it comes into budgeting. And so what this is really suggesting is that there should be a budgeted allocation of twenty. Uh, so that the department can maintain uh, full staffing of operational personnel at nineteen consistently. And I'm certainly happy to take any questions if anybody has any. I know that was quick.
Additional questions? Very important. What's, what's the staff of our records division now? Is it, how many people?
Three.
Three. And the added workload of four additional officers?
Yeah, so I noted that in my staff report. Um, and Michelle, I'll let you jump in here too, but I think, you know, Barry Dunn's. Analysis said that there's sufficient staffing. I, I see those um, office staff, uh, administrative staff working. You know, not daily, I don't make it to the P D daily, but I mean, they're working hard every time I'm over there and there is no shortage of work. Um, and so I can only imagine that more sworn officer is going to lead to more and records and evidence work. Um, for that, that group. So it's definitely something we need to keep an eye on, make sure that we don't fall further behind in that area.
Yeah.
Just for my notes, uh, so how much do we currently have in our council contingency title?
So the council put five hundred thousand in their contingency. You guys have not spent any of that during this biennium. Um, so that full five hundred thousand is still uh, in your contingency right now.
Further conversation.
Are you going to go over your, your report on the cost per patrol person?
Yeah, certainly can, yeah.
Uh, cause I just had a question around you adding in the cost of a patrol vehicle and equipment. Cause it would be amortized over a period of time of, of life that officer's tenure. So I didn't know why we would take the hit and.
Yeah.
In, in the buy, in the, in the one-year.
So typically, we've purchased, or well, I shouldn't say typically, we were. For a number of years, um, leasing police vehicles. We sort of moved away from that and have been purchasing them. So you have this one larger upfront, you know, cost to acquire the vehicle. Um, I would say the lifespan maybe five years on one of those vehicles, given the amount of miles that they drive and the wear and tear that they put on them. We've definitely stretched some of those vehicles much longer than five years, not necessarily, um. Because we should have, but that's just, you know, what, what we've done budgetarily. Um, so I think those uh, one-time equipment and vehicle costs that I noted is seventy-seven thousand. I mean, certainly that's. Amortized over five years, but we buy the computer upfront. We buy a firearm, we buy a taser, we buy. Uh, body cam, trying to go up. What else was on that list, chief? Um. The uniform, there's a lot of just upfront.
But either way, you're still not looking at two nineteen or whatever it was annually.
You're looking at one forty.
One fifty, one forty. If you took five years' worth of, the seventy-seven thousand and amortize it over five years, that'd be a hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
That's, that's what I wanted to know. Yeah, gotcha. But was that, cause I think it would be a little bit lower than what.
Yeah, and it's not clear, clear on that um, table, but.
So my, my, my general position is, and remember, uh, you know, we always. Talk about how much we support our police, law enforcement. We want to save the community. So it's been a big pride for all of us. Um, I know every budget cycle, right? We have our police chief come in and propose the budget. I know every budget cycle, right? We have our police chief come in and propose the budget. And I can't remember my six years here, ten years before, how often there was a lot of challenge from council. It was like, we want to give our law enforcement the resources that they need. This is really the first time, especially during my tenure, where we have ended up with a proposal that says, actually, like, we need more, right? And I think we as a community, we have a lot of things we're facing financially that's, we're talking about all the time. But first and foremost, I believe our responsibility is the safety of our community. But we've heard about how long it takes to hire officers. Once you've identified the need, do you want to go after them? So we don't take on these costs immediately. We've made a lot of decisions as a council when we've had current funding in place, knowing that we have future funding coming in a upcoming budget cycle. Where we have leveraged those funds to get that department moving. We just did it with the library ban, quite frankly, right? Where we said, we have these funds that we can guarantee today, knowing we're going to the next budget cycle tomorrow, what's that look like? In this report, you'll see, you know, so we have, we want three officers is kind of the recommendation here. In the staff report, you'll note that we are entering into a intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County. For a community services officer that will pay up for eighty percent of the cost of that. Is that ongoing or is that the first year hire, Tyler?
It's a three-year I G A, so they'll cover eighty percent for three years, plus eighty percent of the vehicle.
So it's a three-year I G A. And we know again, I'm just gonna keep returning, we're not gonna hire these officers tomorrow, right? We just gotta start the process of getting them. And then we're sitting with five hundred thousand in our council contingency. I, I would put together, I, I would ask council to allow me as mayor to work with our staff. To propose a plan to put in front of us for a vote. That encompasses the agreement with Clackamas County for the homeless officers, community services. That works to try to absorb into our current budget what we can. And then takes a look into our council contingency. To find funds to back this effort to go and get these three officers in as short order as we possibly can. You know, I, I recently had a complaint from a business owner. That had on camera everything that they needed for a break-in situation. We actually found the individual. Big reason that we have to make judgment calls every day, right, on, do we want to send officers out to actually go all the way out to Oregon City to come back? What kinds of things are we sending people off of to do that? These are the judgment calls we're making when we're understaffed, right? Or we don't have the adequate resources. So that's my proposal for this council. I think we, we can do this. I think we can make it happen. I don't know, I'm, I guess I'm asking for permission. I don't really, no offense, I don't really need it. I do fully intend on working with staff and bringing this in front of council for, for an up or down vote. A way to get these three officers in short order.
Can we discuss?
No, please, yeah, I, I'm bringing it for a proposal, but. I'm looking for permission, but I guess what I'm saying is I, I'm planning on bringing this for our proposal, you know, I'm gonna call the question on it.
Nice question. If there's no further questions on the actual report, given the time zone difference for.
Yeah.
Michelle, I, I'd love to. Let the consultant sign off and then we can just continue our discussion here.
Please. Thank you for your work on this. Appreciate it. Okay.
Thanks. So my, my discussion's kind of a familiar theme, especially as far as police funding is to look at. The long term, so whether we, this, first of all, yes, we have money in contingency, but it was a one-term, one-time gift, you know. Our things we didn't allocate. So equally important to me is what we have now is what will we have in the next round? Or what is the plan to pay for in the next budget cycle? And so whatever proposal comes back to me needs to look at that longer term. What would this mean? Do we need to increase public safety levy or fee or so forth? Are there other areas it's going to come from? What's, what's the real impact? And then associated with that. Cause I've said it for two police chiefs, might as well say it for the third. Is I'm looking for that, those, that amortized cost of these big purchases to be reflected in that long-term budget cycle. So yeah, it's fine that we hit a spike this biennium because we know we're buying a lot of equipment, but I want to see how that spreads out over time.
So you're talking equipment, vehicles?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with Dawn, like Stan, I, I one hundred percent support this.
I know you all.
I asked for the staff and study, yeah, but the, I do want to explore, I want to make sure that. To Dawn's point, that money may not be their next budget. And so. I want to be, I just want to be really thoughtful about the funding mechanism that's going to fund this long-term. And, and consider and ask you guys to consider alternative funding mechanisms. Outside of just raising the public safety. I think that's the easy, easy fix. But I will say that there are other places around that are. Finding other mechanisms to support this is the first.
Like grants, things are.
Oh, granted, the problem with grants is there's sometimes a lot of overhead and there's a lot of work behind those to, to fund them. They just don't really do much for your personnel cost. There's things like apartment fees. I think when you start looking at studies, apartments typically have a higher res, call volume. So there's mechanisms in place to where they charge a fee for the public safety in, in high density areas. I would also consider, I mean, I'm not saying the public safety fee needs to be off the table, but I also to want to bring this full circle back around. This is an infinite pot of money that we have to work with. So I want to go back to the S D Cs and while I realize it doesn't fund that. All these plans that we have in place are going to have to come from somewhere. So if we're not willing to raise. Those fees, we're gonna have to pay for that infrastructure somewhere else and it's gonna be out of the general fund, which costs fees. And I just really want to put that on the record at this moment. But I do want to consider alternative funding fees outside of that.
I'll go. I think this is a. I haven't gone through the whole report because I was out of town and I do want to kind of dive more into it. I think overall, you know, I support the findings. I did ask Tyler, like, how much involvement? Did our previous interim chief have and our, and our second interim chief have compared to our current. Police chief. And I just do want to make sure, like, when I saw that, I was surprised by the fact that. And to your point about the detective having, you know, so what forty-three cases or something? And I was just kind of wondering, you know, is the function of your person that reported that crime and stuff. A function of it not getting to a detective who has time to investigate or, or what? And I don't know what all the answers are, but I, I'm supportive of more. Funding for law enforcement and more staffing. I'm not exactly sure. I, I just want to give the new police chief the opportunity to refine the ask. For whether it's another detective or it's a conditional staffing for the administrative records or just what that looks like. We already have three positions vacant, right? Is that what you said? So we gotta get those filled right away. We've got this new position coming on and, and actually the twenty percent of the funding is coming from our opioid dollars. So that's, and plus the eighty percent from the grant, so that's already funded. But I do want to make sure that we've got. What, you know, him and his, his team, you know, collectively needs to kind of be successful. So I really want them to kind of be able to kind of come to us with, you know, what makes best sense for them. Not just from what this report says. And that said, I will, you know, the comments about how much the cops cost, you know, I think I said a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And I will point out, as I have for seven years now, I think about, you know, now the school resource officer. School district's paying us, I think, seventy-one thousand dollars or something per year. So again, that's, you know, if, if the cost is truly a hundred and fifty-eight thousand and we're only getting seventy-one thousand, you know, that's. For two, so, so we're basically losing a hundred and fifty, we're subsidizing it for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to some extent. And people can argue what, how much of that's a subsidy if they want, but, but, but I am concerned about being able to kind of. Recruit some additional funding there to help pay for this over the long term. And again, maybe not, you know, may, maybe ramp it up more, but, but there's something. To be said for finding some additional funding there because school resource officers are extremely important. But I would like to also just find out some other options for funding it in the long run, I agree with what those guys said as far as. You know, and, and that's also, you know, for, for the police folks to kind of tell us what they want for. You know, the most sustainable kind of funding.
Right, I mean, this group is ones that are boots on the ground every day and know where the efficiencies can be gained. Much more than I can, much more than the data out of a report can. And so there needs to be and will continue to be a, a more collaborative approach on. Here's kind of baseline, but what does that mean as far as, you know, boots on the ground and how do you get to where you need to be? The three vacancies that we currently have, I think two are in background or the third going, all three are in background now, okay? So we're making progress filling those. But you know, to the reports point about that attrition rate. You know, you can kind of plan for retirement, that, that's an easy one. You can't necessarily plan for when someone makes a life change and just leaves the field entirely. And you can't always plan when there's other unexpected separations. And so having a little bit more flexibility and making sure we're staying ahead of that. Next person that's leaving is going to be vital to making sure that we don't have continued overtime and draining on the, the staff. You guys and gals have been working like crazy to make sure that we stay above board during this time where we've had a decrease in staff. And so it's just imperative that we.
Are they going to kind of come to, I mean, I guess to you probably, but you know, like, we don't, we have now. No lieutenant position and four sergeants. And so I would hope that that's going to, you know. That seemed to be still unanswered and we don't know. And, and so that's kind of part of that, you know, what, what kind of organization works best for the. New chief and his team.
Yeah, and part of that is letting Chief Husky figure out what works best. For the department and, and his view of the hierarchy and, and overall structure. And so we're gonna continue to work through that as well.
Beautiful. All right. Take care. We'll get to work on something.
Yeah, this is what I need, you know, get the report out there, let you guys and gals answer your, ask your questions and then provide some feedback and, and direction. And what we're hearing, your support with the staff, we just gotta figure out a way to sustainably pay for it going forward, so. We can get to work on our end now.
Or at least a proposal.
I, you know what, can I just, listen, what the mayor said for all you guys back here. I don't think we've ever said no to an, an ask.
Yeah.
So, and I've seen the mayor very frustrated on occasion because the chief didn't ask. And wouldn't bring something that, that felt more substantial, so. And this council, it counsels before me and counsels after me. We're supported. Bring us a reasonable, well-baked, thought-out proposal. That's really what we're looking for.
Thank you. Cool. All right. And thank you guys for being here tonight too. Please continue to be here, feel free to leave as well, but I just wanted to recognize that you showed up for your department and everything else and appreciate your presence here tonight. All right, with that, let's move ahead. We have a public hearing for, yeah, please.
Have a good night, everyone. Annie is gonna sit over here.
Whatever you want.
Then I should share my screen?
Yeah, exactly.
All right. I'm recatching my place, sorry. Ordinance, public hearing, ordinance twenty twenty-four, death eighteen, envision Sandy twenty fifty. An open hearing, twenty twenty-four dash eighteen at eight twenty P M. Is there any abstentions from the hearing body? Any conflicts of interest? All right, Kelly, you have a staff report.
Yeah, so I was gonna mainly let Annie's take it away. She has a PowerPoint prepared. What I, what I wanted to do just real fast is just, you know, it's, it's been a long time coming to this point. I think we've been actively working on this for over four years at this point. And I, I wanted to, I want to start off by thanking the city council, honestly, and you, Mayor Pulliam, because you're actually the one that really. Led the charge on this, honestly, and got this moving. And then the planning commission and all the different staff members and then three J and our different consulting groups and Annie's who did a lot of the work on this project. So I, I just really want to thank everybody, honestly. It's, it's been a fulfilling project. It's also been a time-consuming project. And while I've enjoyed working on it, I'm looking forward to coming to a conclusion and hopefully adopting it tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over to Annie's.
So thank you, Kelly. Thank you, council, for having me this evening. I'm so happy to be in front of you again. I'm just going to share a couple of slides that we have seen in the past, but are just really great for. Refreshing us on all of the work that we have done, as long as I can figure out how to move the slides. There we are. So as you can see, finally in adoption phase, we're actually now in fall of twenty twenty-four. But this work officially kicked off in the spring of twenty twenty-two, so it's been just about over two years. And we have done tremendous work throughout those two and a half years. This envisioned Sandy twenty fifty process touched nearly a thousand community members. In the visioning work that happened for the first year and a half of this project. Staff, our community advisory committee, council and planning commission liaisons were out having conversations with community members. Focus group discussions, online surveys, intercept surveys in Spanish and English at a variety of different. Festivals all throughout town, throughout the seasons. We had a really tremendous turnout at the Sandy High School, talking to over two hundred and fifty eleventh and twelfth graders. About what they wanted to see in the future of their community. So a lot of boots-on-the-ground work happened the first year and a half of this process. Just some photos and images to kind of share and show where we've been. Kudos again to staff and our liaisons for helping, helping be in front and in front of this project throughout, throughout the, the year and a half or so. So we led that visioning work, asking two key questions. What does, what makes Sandy special today? And what do we want to see here in the future? That created a pretty strong language bank for understanding how people view their community. And what they want to see and feel in their community in the future. So these were the two questions. I've got a little bit of a word cloud on the left side. We received so much feedback. We went through and codified every single piece of information we got through all the various conversations. Whether they were ones that happened here in this room or their citizen, uh, community advisory committee. Or through all of these outreach engagement activities. That led to the development of your envisioned Sandy twenty fifty vision statement. This is the framework for your new comprehensive plan. All of the new goals and policies that you see in this document come from and are aligned with the vision statements established in this. In this vision statement. There are six key themes here and those are the organizing principles of your comprehensive plan. And they do align with all of the Oregon statewide planning goals. You might recognize a couple of yourselves in these images. We had a really successful event called Future Fest. Where we brought out that new vision statement to the community. We vetted it with the community. We reported back out what we heard from them. And then we started collecting some big ideas for how to move the needle. How to get to where we walk this aspirational statement for Sandy in the year twenty fifteen. A lot of big ideas were gathered. Those were also influential in developing the goals and policies that you see in your document. In addition, we also had a more focused stakeholder workshop around the natural hazards portion of your new comprehensive plan. That was really dealing with wildfire mitigation, just other general natural hazards mitigation. That culminated in a list of vulnerabilities and potential cross-sector solutions for addressing those vulnerabilities. There were a number of folks that were at the table at these stakeholder workshops that represented. Various levels and areas of expertise in emergency management. Community, you know, organizing disaster management, et cetera. So this was a really impactful workshop process that was part of this overall cop plan process. And then of course, a big shout out to our community advisory committee that really put all of this information together. We met with them eight times throughout the course of this project. They reviewed all of the deliverables. They gave us feedback on everything. And they were instrumental in crafting a lot of the language that you see in this document today. All right, so your new final, your new Sandy comprehensive plan. So this really brings your document down to, or organizes the new cop plan around these six vision themes. There's about two to five goals for each of these vision themes, and we now have about forty ten policies for each of these goals. And I, as I said, um, there are all the statewide planning goals on. Can be correlated or crosswalk to each of those six visions. Um, hopefully, this document is much easier to read and understand, hopefully, it's a lot more accessible than your current uh comprehensive plan. Um, and so coming back to what's changed since you last saw this document in May. Um, we took in all of the edits and comments that were suggested here in this room a few months ago. Um, in addition, we also brought it to planning commission, um and we have a number of small edits that were made. Um, since that hearing, we updated the list of acknowledgements, um we replaced some updated comprehensive plan and zoning maps, uh these are not new maps.
Yeah, I may have a question back, go ahead.
Yeah, certainly, uh, yeah, there's no property rezoning uh being done as part of this process. Um, we've reorganized some images in the timeline, uh we spelled out a couple extra acronyms that were not spelled out originally. We clarified the description of ant farm, uh and then we did make a number of grammar edits that included commas, periods, quotation marks. Um, you had a couple of planning commission members that really uh read through this document with a very fine-tooth comb, so I'm incredibly impressed and. Full of gratitude for that uh extra level of effort that they provided, um and then we did make some minor layout edits as well. Um, I will note that we do have one minor final edit, um we misuse the word community where we meant to say wastewater. On page seventy-eight of the document, so that is one clerical error that we would like to fix.
Thank you, Counselor Walker.
You're welcome. Uh, okay, so I do on that number two.
Yeah.
So, everybody remember Kathleen having a real. Uh. Big deal about zoning map and how, remember, every time I we talked about this, I said. When do we get to the zoning map? When do we consider zoning changes? Because otherwise, we get it piecemeal, people come in and they want to change their zoning and we say, you know, yes or no or whatever. But we don't really have an idea of how that impacts the whole process at all because it's all piecemeal. And so I said, when are we going to have this kind of? Ollie, ollie, income-free, anybody who wants to consider changes so that we're not doing a measure forty-nine issue, um when are we going to do that? Because we've just done a bunch of. Number crunching with our HSA and our HCA or whatever all those acronyms are. That, you know, kind of set a bunch of uh goals and numbers and things like that. And yet, we, you know. I was told, as I recall, that we were going to be doing that, that that was further along in the process. And yet, we haven't updated them.
It's not part of this process, no.
Right, but I don't understand.
So what we did is we removed symbols that were no longer applicable.
I don't, that that's great, but but my point is, my question is. You are up, you you're replacing updated, you're basically incorporating these zoning maps that we have and saying that those are. Going to stay the way they are now for the future, is that?
No, that's not what the, that's not what this does, no.
Okay, can I have that, can can you come on up to the table too, just? I just want clarification on that, please, because it just doesn't, I mean. When we adopt this comprehensive plan, that map is in there and that's what we're adopting. And so we never took the opportunity to ask anybody if they wanted a different zone. On their property.
Well, the re-changing of zones, Kathleen, again, I know you called the attorney out, but the re-changing of zones is a full public hearing process for each. Individual property, right, so this would be a basis of that hearing and of those kind and and of that decision process. But you've got to go through an individual public hearing for each property, there's a whole process to rezone a property, tell me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, uh the typical process, which is what you see here, is you're adopting the the guiding policy, language, big picture. Part of the comprehensive plan. And then later you you go to an implementation stage, which is when you're looking at zoning and changes to the development code and and. That's a later step in the overall process, this is the the thirty-five thousand foot. Change.
Right, but if we have ten properties that come in and want to change from, you know, aid. You know, single family to high density, what does this do to all of our HCA, the the studies that we are just completing? How do we get the impact of what that change would be? Because for me to make a decision on those zoning requests, I kind of want to know how it changes the balance that we're looking for and. Uh, the, you know, the age, the housing needs and capacity analysis.
The, the. Those studies would guide the decision about a zone change, not vice versa. Does that make sense? See, you don't change those studies based on the zone change, those studies inform. The decision about the zone change. So, for example, if your housing capacity analysis had come back and said that you need a lot more residential land, which it didn't. It said he needed a lot more residential land. Then if somebody comes in and they've got, and you and you don't need as much commercial land as you have. And someone came in and wanted to rezone from commercial to residential, then those studies would support you doing that. Um, but you, by and large, your, those studies show that your your mix is generally accurate.
Well, yeah, with the mayor, counselor, if I may, I I remember we, when we talked about this. What was it, maybe eighteen months ago, or I think when. One of the things that was discussed at the time was the importance of separating those two. Items, because if. Hopefully, there won't be, but if there were to be a measure forty-nine claim, you wouldn't want. You wouldn't want to adopt all those things at once, because then it could all be potentially subject to legal proceedings, whereas you want to get the comprehensive plan. Adopted and done, so it can't be touched, right, and then if you're going to take other actions, you would do it separately after.
Everybody keeps bringing up measure forty-nine, and what I'm talking about isn't something that we would say, we're going to rezone your land to something that you don't want. I'm talking about people who have come up in the past and asked for. High-density, you know, low-density stuff to get changed to high-density. And that's, you know, I. I can almost handle the commercial versus residential or industrial, I'm talking about. Low-density, single-family, getting rezoned to medium and high-density.
Yeah, no, like we said, that would be done outside of this process.
Okay. How? I mean, that's, that's what I don't understand.
What you're asking for is the city council. To ask people to come to the city council or to my department. And make their requests all at once.
Just like you did with the uh expansion of the urban growth bounty.
The U G B.
You asked U G B, you asked everybody who, you know, anybody. Hey, if you want to expand out there, come on down.
But we didn't, but we didn't, so that is true, we talked to those people and we let them voice their opinions at a hearing. That didn't mean that they got brought in or not, though. There were some people that did get brought in through that process, and there were some people that we ultimately told them, we can't bring you in.
Right, but I mean, there was a process, that's what I'm talking about. Could, because it's just doing this piecemeal just doesn't even make sense. To me, that this is the time when you actually look at those things of who wants to do this and and then. We make sure that what it is that they want to do meets the goals of our. HCA and HCN.
No, I get what you're saying, but that that would still be a separate process than the process before you tonight. Because as Jeff just pointed out very well, is that we don't want this process to get caught up in that process in the event that there's an appeal.
What process?
The adoption of the comp plan, we don't want that to be in a Luba appeal. When somebody is appealing a decision on a zone change or a comprehensive plan map change.
The only zone change changes we'd be making is some, is some, is the owners requesting it.
Yeah, but but other people still have appeal rights. And we might, and we might still ultimately, if they come and ask for the zone change, we might ultimately still deny it. And then they might appeal the city council decision and that would go to Luba.
So we're, what we're doing by adopting this is that we're just going to be going piecemeal. Which doesn't seem like.
No, we're.
Our, our, we're setting our priorities and our values to help guide our this future decisions for development.
But we are adopting the zoning map as it is.
The current, the current zoning map, as it's currently stated today in the adoption of the comp plan, but there's nothing in this comp plan that says that we can't adjust or change those zones. Based on the values in this document anytime that we want.
Nothing pre- prequits the council from directing staff, one after this is done. To engage in some sort of comprehensive zone map analysis. But council could certainly do that, I'm sorry, I saw your hand up.
I just for clarification, uh when we say replace the updated comp plan and zoning. When we adopt the comprehensive plan. Those zone maps are a part of it? Correct.
Yeah, but you can still amend it.
So, fair, so that that was my next question, that is, if you would update your zone map, you also have to update comp plan.
I see a head shake.
And you amend your comprehensive plan, right?
Right, so because they're part of the comprehensive plan, it is considered a comprehensive plan amendment when you change that map, yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
It's it's really, I mean. The difference between amending a comprehensive plan and adopting a whole new comprehensive plan is kind of linguistics. It's, you're adopting a new one in this case because you're changing most of it. You're not changing everything, but you're changing most.
So we're going to be continually amending it.
Yes.
Because we're amending the zones.
Right, and a little point, uh if somebody were to challenge it with under uh this. A minor amendment for a updated map, they can't challenge the broader part of the comp plan, is that true?
They're they're just appealing the part that you're changing.
Just that little.
Right, so.
So that's, that's the limitation that you're trying to to get through by adopting this now.
Yeah, and the the old comp plan, I I don't entirely know why it was done this way, to be quite honest. It had symbol, the old comp plan map, if you look at it on our wall upstairs. It has symbols for where all the parks are going to be and what type of parks. Well, that's now been done through a new parks master plan process, so that's no longer applicable. And the part I really don't understand in nineteen ninety-seven why it was ever put on here. Is it shows where future community colleges will go, where future schools will go, and it's like that's all done by OTSD and by. Community colleges, I don't know why we ever put that on our map. So that's what we removed from the comp plan map.
Dreams. But you also.
Dreams, yeah.
You also adopted, you you did change the, you did rezone um all the parkland, which was great, I, you know, I think that's great.
Oh, since then, yes.
Right, but that's, that's as part of this, you know, it says no property rezoning and there was property rezoning because.
No, that that happened in the past. So that did not happen.
This process means this four-year process, that's, that's what. You're, that's that comment.
The, the zone change and the comprehensive plan map changes to the parks and open space designation was done in the in a past project. With a separate quasi judicial hearing.
Yeah, so again, somebody comes in and wants to take, you know, two hundred acres. And and change it to from. Single family to high-density. And what's the process? That's a comp plan amendment that has to go through the HCN and the HCA?
It would be a quasi judicial hearing. So it would be a zone change request and a comprehensive plan map modification request, you'd be doing both. And then it would go to the planning commission for a recommendation and then for you to for a decision.
But what, but what does that do to the eight, the 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 housing capacity now?
Well, the housing capacity analysis or the E O A would. As Josh said, would inform if we should even be doing that, so I'll change it up.
It establishes a new factual basis for you to be making those decisions about whether or not a property should be, should be zoned. Um, so the HCA and the E O A guides your decision-making for whether or not that's an appropriate request.
But because those documents don't specify that we have a shortage of something. The basis of making, I'm sorry, because those documents don't, and I'm I'm posing a question, so. Because those documents don't identify a shortage of acreage in any specific zone. Does that become then just a discretionary decision?
As I recall, there was a, there was a balancing between a couple of different residential zones that maybe was slightly off, but no, no dramatic differences. So, yeah, it it makes it harder to justify. A big zone change from one major use to a different major use.
You wouldn't be able to do two hundred acres.
Right, yeah, I think the other important point, Counselor Walker, is that this piecemeal application to rezone something, that could happen yesterday. And if you adopt this today, that could happen tomorrow. We we can't control whether somebody brings in those types of applications. If the city wants to initiate a broader look at that, you could have done that yesterday and you can do that tomorrow. This, this uh decision in front of you doesn't. Change the discretion that the city has to do that or not do that.
Why does the zoning map even have to be in there?
It, I mean, it's referred to, I, yeah, I mean, I I would include it.
Why? It's mentioned on page twenty-nine as as a critical part of the comp plan.
Yeah, I I guess, I think it. Part of the, uh, that's one of the ways that you meet the statewide planning goals through your comprehensive plan.
Okay, let me give you another example, the villages, remember how we all said the villages are not a good. Allocation that we don't like the way it worked. And we thought we were getting rid of villages with this new comp plan, and they're still on here.
One of the policies in your comp plan, which you guys approved, was to remove the village designation, the, sorry, not the village designation. The commercial village designation from the intersection of Blood Road and Kelso. That is a policy in the comp plan before you tonight. If this is adopted, if this is adopted, hold on, if this is adopted. Then staff will be bringing that proposal before you in the nearest future, in the next year. With property owner consent to rezone that to residential. So be following the policy in this and bringing it before you, as you set the policy.
It's the implementation of the policy goal that you set.
Correct, right, correct.
Well, and like I said, when I, every time there was a zone change that came to this. I was asking that, you know, we we take care of those all in. When we did a comp plan, in fact, I think I voted no on the last one, because I said that should be done in the comp plan. Looking at rezoning. Opening it up like we did the U G B expansion, I guess, you know, I I thought that that's what we were doing. Under this process. Because I kept bringing it up and I kept being told it was a different process, so it is what it is, I guess, um. I I still think we should be doing it in this process, but I guess we'll. Take care of it the way you've explained it. Thank you.
All right. Kelly?
Um, yeah, I I did want to, since, yeah, we were on that, I I think Annie says a slide or two left, I did want to point out as part of this. Presentation. That I didn't really want to go through line by line on the staff report, but I did give in the background and context section. I did give a pretty exhaustive background of kind of where we came from in February of two thousand twenty. So if you have any questions about that, all the background information's in there. Um, we also listed in the staff report the changes that were. Um, or the edits that were made by the planning commission on page two of that staff report, so those are all listed. Um, we took the recommendations from Counselor Hokinson. And I think it was Commissioner Lee that gave us the most from the commission, and we incorporated the majority of those into. Uh, what you have tonight before you. Um. And then I did want to point out, just for the record, um, since we're talking about Luba appeals and everything else. We did notify D L C D uh for the state statute requirement. Um, we did get some comments from D L C D and we incorporated those into the document as well. Um, you'll probably remember that from the last work session, we talked about this a few months ago. I did get some comments from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, um. They were very vague, like they typically are from that group, and we did incorporate those in as well into our housing policy section. Um, I mean, they were already in there, but we incorporated what they asked. Um, and then if you look through the staff report, um. It explains that we also attach to the ordinance have an exhaustive findings document, so that findings document. Is basically goes through each of the criterion within the Sandy municipal code. And then it also goes through each applicable statewide planning goal. Um, and that finding document was reviewed by our city attorney as well, um, so that findings document's important in case of a Luba appeal. Um, so that's also attached to the ordinance um before you tonight. And then I'll turn it back over to you.
Yeah, so the key considerations for this evening, um, do you feel like this comprehensive plan accurately reflects the understanding of those priorities that were uncovered? Through all of the engagement and visioning work that happened with the community? Do the goals and policies accurately reflect our understanding of the factual basis and trends? You're supporting reference documents and capture the revisions that we've discussed in prior joint work sessions? And do you approve this ordinance twenty-four oh four zero CPA adopting the envision Sandy twenty fifty update to the comprehensive plan text? So those are considerations for tonight, um, and I'm also happy to answer any questions. And also leave you with a couple of considerations and thoughts for the future, um, so speaking directly to your point. There are a number of implementation steps that happen after an adoption of a comprehensive plan. You now have a new policy foundation for making decisions, um, whether it be zoning map and comprehensive plan map rezones. Whether it be updating your development code, uh curating, uh, sorry, creating new work plans and or budgets. Uh, to align with the policies that you have set forth in this comprehensive plan. Um, so I do hope that this gives you energy to be able to go after uh those directives and those actions that you'd love to take together as counsel.
Awesome, thank you.
I have a follow-up question, please, yeah.
Please, yeah.
Um, the question I think was asked by Council Sheldon, uh, is the zoning map required in a comp? I see it from the state's thing that it says in some jurisdictions, it may be the sum, and it says the zoning map is always subordinate to the comp plan map. Do we know?
I've never not seen it in a comp.
Yeah.
I I mean, there there's always a map.
There has to be a comp plan.
Comp plan map. I I have.
Not every city has a comprehensive plan map. Some cities have just a zoning map. Some cities have two maps. So.
Right.
But they will always, a comprehensive plan will always have whatever map a city uses, whether it's a zoning comp plan or both.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you for the staff report. I'll now move ahead to public testimony. Your guidelines for those of you who uh wish to speak, please do try to avoid repetition. It is fine uh to express the same thoughts. Um, it is offensive to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you'd like to have formally placed into the record as proceeding, please send those to our recorder, reporter at sdi.sandy.or.us. Staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. Uh, for public testimony tonight, for those of you who join us in person, please raise your hand at the right time uh when you wish to speak. If you're participating online, please click the raised hand button at the right time and we'll recognize you. And if you're uh participating via telephone, please dial star nine in order to raise your hand and then wait to be recognized. I'll call on each person once your turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify. The city recorder will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Call for all testimony on the proposed ordinance, three minutes each.
Hey, Mayor, I'm looking for any raised hands. Seeing them, looking online. And Mayor, I don't see any raises.
All right, I got the staff recap recommendation.
Um, yeah, so in the staff report, um, we recommend approval and we have a motion. Uh, it's a very simple motion, but it's I move to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four eighteen.
Thank you. Just a flip, did you want an amendment?
Oh, no, wait, yeah, thank you, counselor, yeah.
I will uh call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Motion by Counselor Smallwood, a second by Counselor Maiton to close the public hearing, close the public hearing at eight forty nine P M. All right, we're to discussion. We all know how I feel about it. Very excited about it. Thank you to staff and our community uh for participation. I got to participate as a uh high schooler uh back in the late nineties the last time. And then now I got to a little bit my role as mayor here in twenty twenty four, so that's twenty five years since I graduated. That's a long time to be updating these uh master plans. Uh, my hope is, I guess I'll be a grandfather, try to participate in the next one.
You get your picture in this one.
Yeah, um, if I am going to be a grandfather for it, we can go ahead and postpone that a little bit. Uh, but uh, no, I mean, this is, that's what these are about, right, is is for our community members to participate in what the future of our community looks like if they decide to raise their families here. Uh, hopefully, this is a guiding document that really becomes a vision. To Kelly's point, the last one, um, you know, we had the community college, future campus and all that stuff. I'm I'm with Linda Malone. I still have dreams of some of those things, but maybe this is a little bit more on point than than that was, but I'm I'm totally excited about it. It's a big accomplishment. It's that that was a big priority for me personally. Um, just thank you for everyone who's a big part of this, so. Yeah. With that, unless there's further conversation, I'll entertain a motion for, I'll call for the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash eighteen.
Just kind of question, please. How do you accommodate the change that's been proposed?
So and Josh, please feel free to disagree. I consider this a script there. I don't think this is anything substantive in any way, but it's very clear what the intention is for that section better.
To make it clear with your motion, though, say I've moved to approve the first reading with the amendment proposed by staff.
Okay. Cool. So let's, we gotta get that first reading now.
Yes, Mayor, uh, this is ordinance twenty twenty four dash eighteen and ordinance adopting an updated Sandy comprehensive plan.
So I no, I I can, but I always wait for some, so I'm pretty sure I can.
I'll I'll make it.
With the with the amendment?
Yep. Uh, I move to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash eighteen with the amendment approved by staff.
Um, all those in favor of the first reading signify by saying aye.
Aye. Did we get a second? I'm sorry.
Oh, is there a second?
Sure.
All right, most by Counselor Smallwood, second by Counselor Hokinson, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays. Motion carries. I will call for the second reading.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash eighteen and ordinance adopting an updated Sandy comprehensive plan.
Sir, a motion for adopt the second reading.
I move to uh adopt the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash eighteen with the amendment as proposed by staff.
Sir, a second.
I'll second. We'll just reverse it.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hokinson with the motion, Counselor Smallwood with the uh second uh for the second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays. Motion carries. All right. Lot of work there. Thank you, everybody. Okay, thanks, Coach. Um, moving ahead to a contract approval for engineering services for the Alder Creek Water Treatment Plant and and there's several that got a very close personal view.
Spiders and all.
Good. Yeah, don't forget the spiders.
And they were huge.
But while Jenny gets set up, I'll just do a brief intro. Um, obviously, the Alder Creek Treatment Plant is vital to the water supply in Sandy. Um, and we've been taking steps to do all the necessary improvements over the last twenty two months. How long have you been here now?
Two years and eight months.
Two years and eight months, okay, so thirty two months, not twenty two months.
Wow, that went fast.
Yeah, it sure did. Thank you, Jenny, for all the work. Uh, and tonight before you, we have an engineering services um contract for the treatment plant upgrades.
What that?
Uh, yes, so as you remember, when we adopted the water master plan in November of twenty two, we had the strategy of keeping our water rates as low as possible for Sandy residents. And so our um our plan centers on rehabilitating our Alder Creek Water Facility. It can provide the majority of our water most of the year. We need the Bull Run Portland connection to help us through the summer higher peak demand. Um, we did have four council members visit the treatment plant with us on September twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Um, as you may have heard, uh, the facility is beyond its useful life and it is imperative to upgrade it. We've secured all the funding we need to do this, and in fact, council um approved a membrane equipment pre-purchase on August fifth, twenty twenty four. So this contract is for the engineering to include that membrane as well as some additional pumps and some other improvements to upgrade the facilities. We had an RFP with two engineers who responded to the proposals. Uh, Keller and Associates was ranked the highest, and we've already had a test run of Keller and Associates. They helped us fix the Sander Cup Reservoir. They're also working on our F one pump station. They um, they're really good engineers and I trust them to complete this vital engineering upgrade. Um, in terms of the budget impact, this is included in the BN twenty three twenty four budget financed through two funding sources, one from Business Oregon, the other from the Special Public Works Fund. Both of them are very low interest loans. And this contract is limited to a maximum total fee of one million, nine hundred and eleven thousand and two hundred dollars. And staff recommends, um, council authorized the city manager to execute the proposed contract.
Awesome, thank you. Are any questions for Jenny before we move ahead? Or comments?
Jenny, tell me again what the cost of um the project implementation of this design is? So we thought we 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 were purchasing the membranes and then the the bigger project of actually implementing it.
So we have seventeen point five million dollars set aside to do the Alder Creek upgrades, the treatment portion, as well as bringing some Sandy net fiber in and doing some assessments of those pipelines. And that includes all the program management, the financing and the communications of that element.
And and this new membrane facility, the the shell around it and that's all part of us.
Yes.
That's all. Well, do we have a motion to move ahead?
I'll make a motion, please move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Keller Associates for engineering services for Alder Creek Water Treatment Plan upgrades as provided in meeting back in.
Sir, a second.
I'll second it.
Awesome. Uh, motion by Counselor Walker, a second by Counselor Maiton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed nays. Motion carries. Awesome. Thank you, Jenny. Really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving ahead, review of applications for the appointment to vacate city council seat number five.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a a brief moment and say thank you to the council members who were able to attend that Alder Creek um tour. Actually, that was my first time going up there with a really awesome experience to see where the water comes from, how it's treated, where it goes. Uh, the creek was a little higher than some of us maybe thought going into that day, and some of you got some very wet feet. Apologies for uh not communicating the footwear in a better way, but um, hopefully you found that.
I have the right footwear.
Well, hopefully you found that
I followed the directions.
tour uh beneficial and helpful seeing with the whole scope of of what goes on with our water system. And with that, um, Counselor Carl Exner vacated his position uh in August. Since that time, we um did a recruitment, so to speak, and received five applicants to fill that vacancy. You have a, uh, we have a packet to hand out um uh to you this evening that includes each of the applicants, um, as well as the uh criteria that the council established for filling that vacancy. And so really, the initial question that our staff has for you this evening is what approach would you like to take in this discussion? It can be very open-ended and you go ahead and take care of that yourselves and have open dialogue and communication, or we can walk through um each of the criteria and discuss uh uh the candidates and how they relate to each of that criteria.
Can you refresh my memory of what we plan to do with those who move on?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so review of applications is this evening. Uh, depending on who you select to move forward in the process, we will do, or council will do, interviews on October twenty first. And that evening, um, if there's a decision to be made, you could certainly um move to appoint someone that evening, or that appointment could take place the following meeting, November fourth, I believe the date is, that day. So no no decision tonight other than selecting candidates who you'd like to move forward for interviews.
entirely, if you don't mind, the only thing, the only thing I would add, Mayor, is just that the uh council established some evaluation criteria to think about tonight, that's on the second page of your staff report, just to help guide your thinking.
I just could you say what more they were just helping each other. I read through them and honestly, I'm really impressed with the quality of the candidates. I have no issues with any of them. Yeah, I'd interview them all.
I I would second that. Having read through everything, I I I would be um totally content with moving everybody forward.
So assuming there's no objections, so eh the process we went through last time, and I know that this is laying out the process. Uh, so basically, we would have these individuals come into our next council meeting, um, go through a Q and A process for each of them. Each one, they always got to get the same questions. They'll provide answers. And then we develop, we go into discussion, and then as a council, last time we did a uh silent ballot, secret ballot, but well, not through secret, everything subject to how the group requests.
There was a segment.
But it but it was silent. Um, uh, ranking, and then the ranking was determined. So is that the process that's being proposed today or what?
Um, I would say yes.
Cause I don't see that we're that far into that, right, in what's being proposed.
That we're not far into that?
Well, like, what are, what is our ballots gonna look like?
Yeah.
Voting?
We hadn't honestly gotten into the question of secret balloting or not. I I'd love for uh the city attorney to maybe weigh in on whether that's.
I'm guessing he wants to.
Yeah.
He gave me the vote.
It's the way we did last time.
Yeah, it it's been a question of the past, so we should, we should just clarify.
Yeah, so um the Attorney General's opinion is that Oregon public meetings lot is not allow secret ballots.
Okay.
Uh, all votes have to be done publicly. So there are a couple of ways you can do that. Um, you could do what you do here typically, where you do a voice vote.
Or a by paper.
You could do it by paper and have the city reporter read those uh votes out.
Sure.
Uh, but it does have to be a public vote.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, can you just say, well, you know, my top two candidates are these two people?
We could do whatever. I mean, we we could.
As long as it's always publicly done.
We 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 could each go through and each publicly cast their vote, right? It's just that it's also now that I know that these guys are doing, am I shifting mine, or do we want to at least put it on paper, tally it up, and then take that feedback? And that's kind of why you would do it on paper, right, is to not be pressuring and to try to allow everybody an opportunity to do an analysis, provide their vote, get that feedback from council, take it, and then kind of figure out where we go from there. I think we did two ballots last time. I don't think we did three, but that's an example, right? It it was close, or I think it may have been tied. And then we came back and and we had to do it again.
So I'm fine with, you know, picking my top one, two, or whatever. What I don't want to do is get into a thing where my score of a three out of five.
You don't want to do the rank choice.
That's what I was gonna say.
I don't want to, not at all. Yeah, not at all. Okay. So why don't you come, and I'm just saying these things out loud, so if I must speak, but why don't we come prepared with paper ballots? Um, and enough to go through a couple of rounds possibly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then I would like to provide each person a three minute statement before they go into their Q and A.
Okay.
Is there an objection to that? Or two minutes, or a one minute?
How do you do it after?
Or a thing at the end?
Why don't we do it like we do the?
I just like to hear some of these guys have to say when they're not prompted.
But we do it like with uh with the other uh positions with Phil, usually give him a spot at the end to ask us.
At the end?
But or just give them the thing.
I'm cool with that.
Yeah, because that way if they feel like they didn't get something out in the standing questions, they have an opportunity to spill it.
Okay.
And are we ask asking different questions than what we asked on?
So what are the questions?
So, yeah, thank you. So in the process that the council adopted, it said explicitly that the um the questions will closely mirror those that were already asked on form, but it's a chance for them to explain themselves further and for you to ask follow-up questions. So it's essentially the same questions that were asked on the application form. Is is there, the questions aren't meant to be secret. I mean, they're going to be published in the meeting back, frankly. So people will know the questions are going in.
And you can ask a follow-up as long as it pertains to the question and the direct answer to it. Okay. That sound right to everybody? We sound good, so we're gonna move the five on. Okay, then we're gonna go into kind of that interview process at our next meeting, and then we're gonna go into that that ballot process. Cool?
Um, I assume they could be Zoom, they could be here virtual or in person, but I I think
Well, I think.
I would love to meet people in person, if it works out.
But I think it's up to those individuals, right? They want to participate. Cool. All right, uh, did you need a vote or anything from us, or did we just do enough?
I can be provided a direction to advance by uh applicants forward for interviews.
Perfect.
And the only thing I would add is um just prepare for a meeting that might go a little bit longer than what we've had over the last couple of meetings, because there is already a handful of things on the agenda, some of which are time sensitive and challenging to.
We should have a workshop. Time box maybe answers, so we don't go.
I was gonna say, because eh yes, to your point, I think that's a great idea, because otherwise we this could turn into a grilling session.
What, three minutes?
Yeah.
Three minutes each question?
But also like, or maybe maybe limited to the number of questions that we're gonna ask too.
I was gonna say, because I know when we like, we did the police chief questions, they had X number of minutes for all of their questions. They knew what the questions were, and they were expected to keep their answers within that. And about halfway through, we reminded them that you're either ahead or behind, so, you know, pick it up. Something like that. I I don't know, something like that, just so we know what we're getting into.
So we got, yeah, yeah, yeah. So we got five candidates, so um we we can allocate twenty twenty minutes to each.
That's exactly what I was just gonna suggest here. I I have a draft of the questions. I think I have five
Okay.
questions of substance, and then a chance for them to make a statement at the end.
Why do we even talk? It's just what you propose. So yeah. Adding additional things to it, because they've already, the question's already been asked and answered. They're they're only gonna add, bring new things to the conversation
Yeah.
when they come in and you repeat the question. Why would they regurgitate what they already wrote?
And they'll be here with the other candidates, right? So does order matter? Is there an advantage to the last one?
So what the council, I I reviewed.
Last time, we had people outside and then.
Outside, they weren't in here.
One by one.
It was one at a time.
Yep.
So I would suggest we do the same thing.
Awesome.
Unless, unless someone real sly wants to.
How does that play with open meetings?
You can encourage them to wait outside. You can require them to wait outside.
Okay. This is the wild west. I wish I would have known that when I was going for that appointment for state rep, they made me stand outside. I should have been like, you know what, guys?
Open meetings.
I refuse. I'm staying in. And then they would have been like, they would have seen right from the beginning what kind of guy they were dealing with. Alright, cool. Well, it sounds like we're good. Let's uh move ahead, uh report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, um brief report this evening. So I sent it out uh in the weekend update on Friday. But just a reminder that we do have the grand opening for Cedar Park sort of um out in the open now and we have a date. That's Saturday, November second, from noon to two, so that you drive by. It doesn't quite look like it's gonna be there, but it happens like that, so um it's gonna, the improvements have been really amazing to see how quickly they come together. Um and so that will be a great community event on November second. A reminder that next week is the League of Oregon Cities Conference. Um most of the council is coming. I think councillor Sheldon, uh you have a conflict, is that right?
I do, I do too.
You have a conflict as well?
I do too.
Okay.
Who's going again?
So who's going then? Councillor Smallwood, councillor Hobson, Mayor Paul. Okay. Uh Jeff also has a prior engagement, so it'll be four of us. Uh we've made some dinner reservations one evening, similar to what we did last year in Eugene. Um and if anything changes as far as your plans go, just let us know and we'll make any modifications that we need to make. Um and then other than that, we are just chugging away with the annual audit. Um that's taking a immense amount of time. Um hence the lack of a more robust city manager report this evening, but um we're almost finished with that. I am very much looking forward to the new finance director starting in four weeks from today. Um so that'll be more to share with that as he gets closer and he'll be at that first meeting to meet some of you. Um but looking forward to that transition and that'll turn it back in.
Thank you. Alright, done.
Well, cool. Um Chris, uh councillor Maiton, do you wanna do our?
Yeah, our breakout.
You can do that report on, or do you wanna do it now?
Which ones?
Just the update on our, on Tyler.
Oh, you can do it.
Okay. So we we met today and um we're we're really very close. Uh Angie's very close to selecting a uh three sixty degree uh assessment tool. She presented a couple of them. They're both very good and and provided these plan uh play out of the way. It's a couple of things to check that there'll be one coming out. You'll get an email, advanced notice, then you'll get a a second email with a link and all of us will fill that out.
Forwarded his ninety six questions.
You weren't gonna tell them that.
Oh, God.
Remember?
But they said fifteen to thirty minutes total, the two minutes.
Yeah. So they could, they go pretty fast. This is one of those questions where the subject's gonna be asked three or four different ways, you know, to kind of gauge where you're really at. There were also uh five different uh community representatives. I don't remember all of them, but two of them were business owners, quack, was uh your bank.
The bank.
And then the school district was also a business.
NUPA.
NUPA.
Aaron.
Oh, and the school board. Yeah, from the school, Chris. And there's one more. Oh, there's one more.
And then Chris from um Chamber.
Yeah, but there's one more.
And then the fire chief.
That was the one, the fire chief. Um and so anyway, that's coming. They'll do it. All the direct reports will also weigh in. And basically uh with this, we will get, what we ask for is to have the consultant actually give us a report in our in our meeting, so they'll give us a twenty thirty minute summary. Uh that consultant will also be available for an hour with Tyler to go over personal one-on-one results. And uh we'll be looking for eh one of the things I ask for is the council to point out if there's opportunities for us to give, to do something that will help, you know, improve that that relationship between us and city manager. Um and then we will uh decide what areas, essentially, I think the art discussion will be to focus on what areas we wanna see improved or goals or targets and that sort of thing. Uh I did confirm, this is just a check-in. We're not adjusting the contract, not changing pay or anything like that. This is just a an annual review.
The the only thing you missed would be timeline. It should come out, should hit your inbox before the twenty fourth of October.
Yeah.
So it'll be before the end of the month because before maybe even the twenty first of October, so somewhere in the next two weeks.
No.
Cool.
Thank you guys for sharing my comment.
So I I just had one other question. What'd you do to your laptop? And you can just cover that in your report, but it looks tragic.
Yeah.
I I have a new one, I just haven't.
I just, I just saw that.
Yeah, those two in ones are terrible. But you know, when you can flip it over, cause if, cause if you're
They didn't start.
If it's on your lap on the couch and you fall asleep and it falls down off the side of the couch.
Hypothetically.
That ends. And if you do it enough times, that ends just. Yeah, it's still working though.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Yeah, that's what happened. Um so thank you so much for the. The left, um thank uh thank you to Jenny and uh the PW staff for the and the consultants for the toy water plant. That was really um neat to kind of go down and see uh what all they've done. Joe's just done a great job of kind of taking ownership of that uh plant for it, you know, on behalf of the city and just knowing all the how everything works and having to figure a lot out on his own. So he's he's just done really well on that. We did have a presentation from the, do you wanna update on the waste? Okay, it was mostly with the drinking water uh projects and again, they're um I think the total, you know, cost of that project is like seventy million, it's like forty for the Portland connection and something like thirty for the for the other stuff. Um let's see, the um library didn't have a an update. Um we still need to kind of get going, get coordinating with the city of Portland uh and the Bull Run filtration plant on the hauling on Bluff Road. Um it's a little bit more bearable only because we've been able to close the windows for fall. Um but yeah, there's still, I'm just really concerned that our road's getting beat to tar and, you know, they they're rebuilding Dodge Park and Lust Road and doing all this stuff. And ours is getting the most beat up, so uh plus it's going through the school zones and all that. Um I'm really excited about the um park opening and excited to to see how that goes. Oh, I was gonna add one thing to your um mention about the um review. I think it's something to also, you know, you said it's it's just a uh check-in or something or.
The contract is a three-year contract, so that gets renegotiated in two years.
The thing I would add though is that, you know, when I look at, you know, Tyler's been, he he had a contract, a temporary contract for uh serving as finance director uh when he was assistant public, uh assistant um city manager. And then when he, I think when he became the city manager, there was no, you know, he's been filling two full-time positions basically. And 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 I guess I would just be open to looking at, you know, that amount, that amount of work that's been done. He saved us a huge amount of money and done a, you know, he's doing the audit right now. Um and I just see, think that that's some, that's worth something, that all that additional work.
We have a week compensated for that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that was that was built into the agreement. So he he got a bonus during this period.
For a period up till like ju- last January.
Well, that's cause he didn't hire.
Well, yeah, yeah, and I'm sorry, but it was, and I'm so, I'm sorry, but it was built specifically to encourage a quick hire. Right? But you don't, you don't continue to, the bonus, we don't get the quick hire though, right?
I I I just wasn't involved. I wasn't involved in the bonus.
I will say for what it's worth, that typically you do a particular term of contract, you have to renegotiate it at the end of that term. It doesn't prevent you from amending it during the term. And it is fairly common that you make some sort of amendment during the term of a contract, depending on how long it is. Cause something went differently than you expected or or whatever, so you're not, you're not locked in to that contract without the opportunity to amend it if you desire.
So we'll take that up in executive session.
Sure. Sure.
I think that's all I have to.
Yeah. And Rich.
Okay. Uh I also wanted to thank uh, I think the comp plan, um well, I don't understand the map piece. Uh I do think it came out very well, so I just wanted to thank Kelly, ThreeJS and just even all the community members that participated. I think it was a pretty cool process. Also, I will be out of town uh for this meeting, so I I don't, I'll be uh attending via Zoom, so if any accommodations. Um I I think I could just email you my responses, Jeff, if that would work.
Sure.
Instead of writing them down or whatever and just do it that way, then be through my city email, public record, all that good stuff.
Okay.
Um so playing on that, but I just wanna um in case I don't get an opportunity to say it, it was it was really cool to see um these five, uh you know, five people with a breadth of experience and uh who all put theirs, you know, put themselves out there and are willing to go through this process. Um to set up here and volunteer is uh is pretty cool. So I just wanted to say thank you in case I don't get a chance to do it then, otherwise, other than that, and then when they get it, you say I'm sorry.
Yeah. Like I would be knew what you were getting into.
Yeah, exactly. Uh on that note, um I I would say this, and I and I'm just throwing it out there, it's not a, it's not a deal for me. But one of the uh applicants mentions uh significant amount of travel and uh, you know, the possibility of not being there much. I didn't know if we wanted to have a discussion about attendance and what that would look like and expectations around that. Cause mostly because uh I think there are lots of options out there for attendance outside of that. But if it's, if it's a deal stopper, I also wanna respect the the person's time and and not put them through a a lengthy process. So if that's a discussion we wanted to have, I don't, I don't know. Uh I I think I said, it's not a deal breaker for me. Uh but did note it. Hey, can I take, just offer a body here and maybe staff can pass it on, because I remember reading that one candidate, he said that any one of us I'm sure would be happy to take a phone call from the candidate and discuss the actual time commitment. So if anybody else wanted, I'd be happy to provide some.
You insert a question in here, can we work into a question, you know, do you have the ability to serve in this role? I mean, that's been a standard question.
It says that and that's. They raised the question. They raised the question themselves. I'm not sure I should say that.
Yeah, and I mean, that's part, that's a tendency. I mean, we have a rule written for how how many absences they can be in. And one year time frame, so that's the one.
But if you can zoom in, I mean, I guess my argument anymore, eh obviously, right, you'd want them here as much as possible. I'm not, I'm not arguing that. But we had an entire year of council meetings online, and so I feel anymore, that's equivalent attendance to being in person.
So the reason I'm bringing this up is the tone of the the answer, the response was more of, I'd some, he's, he or she, I don't remember who, but they said, I need to think about this. And so I'm offering if.
Oh. It states, it states is is a quote, high on our priority list, the travel is, which is fine. Um and uh would discuss this point in greater detail to ensure he can meet the demands. I mean, I don't know what his travel is. I would imagine that if you're traveling to, you know, Southeast Asia, you might not like wanna get on it at three in the morning, you know, whatever time.
Yeah, right.
So I think, uh I don't know if it's something, you know, that um, you know, we have a conver- someone from council has a conversation, just so we can be clear and what our expectations are pretty clear. I just don't wanna waste person's time, right?
Sure.
That's my thoughts.
The council rules are not super clear. Um yeah, it says that a council position becomes vacant if the council member is absent from the city for more than thirty days without council permission or absent from all meetings of the council within a sixty day period without council permission. Um an excused absence is typically for personal, family or medical reasons. There isn't a definition of unexcused, although I assume that's everything else that's not personal, family or medical.
I really think we're taking the wrong tact on this. I think it's just a matter of providing information to this candidate, letting them decide.
Then let them answer and then to Lori's point, right, that's how Lori feels about attendance, which is fine, but other people may have different feelings.
Totally.
It's on all of us individually as councillors to weigh these things as we see fit.
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely.
Okay. Alright, cool.
Next?
Yeah.
Uh yeah, so uh in the uh the Invision Sandy, super excited to see that come to fruition and go through tonight. Um spent a lot of time on that, especially in the first year, year and a half, going to a lot of those things and participating with the uh with the community group for a period of time. Uh until they kind of move past that, so very excited to see that uh move forward. Uh also looking forward to the park opening. So it's been fun to watch all of the uh Joe Johansson's videos as it's, as it's been moving forward, so uh really neat to see him get to utilize that skillset that he has uh to put that into practice so people can see it. And uh the water tour was great, super enjoyable, fun to see how all that works and uh and state that it's in, so. That's it.
Yeah, I don't have much more to add. I just wanna also add, uh thanks to Rich for bringing up the Sandy Police Department uh staffing survey many moves ago to finally get it done, cause I like to see data support what we thought we'd do and uh I I really liked that report. Also very pleased with the outcome of uh Invision twenty fifty. Um and then I'd like to give my thanks to the Alder Creek Tour. It was fun. Um and I would love to do more of those. Um I specifically wanna see Bull run. Which I know how hard it is to get into, but just to see how that all interconnects.
Thank you. Uh for me, I just wanted to reference and kind of this uh staffing study proposal. I'm gonna uh have a conversation with councillor Sheldon. I'm definitely gonna loop him in on the conversations as we try to put together something that will be amendable um to council. Um uh on that again, wanted to thank the officers that showed up and and thank our staff for putting together that study. I feel like a lot of the times, you know, and I I'm guilty of this as well, is, you know, going out and feel like we've got our strongly funded police department. We've got it fully staffed and yeah, wha- wha- what does fully staffed mean, right? And and what does fully funded mean? And on the past, it's been off the recommendation of our chief, but now we have a report and we've got some good methodology and research behind it. And um and I hope you guys took the opening statements. I said, right, I really meant those things. I wasn't trying to play gosh yet with anyone. I mean, it we we as a council has really supported our police department and I think this is another opportunity uh to do so. Uh excited about that park um opening. Um and uh there's been a lot of different conversations on wastewater. There's a lot of developments with wastewater and water funding and the different paths that we're gonna go. Um I think that um I feel very strongly uh that we need to get a lot more transparent, a lot quicker on the issue of wastewater. Uh uh the truth is, is that um it's not that we don't have many good options in front of us. We have zero good options in front of us. And the problem is, is that there's a lot of people with guilty knowledge of the direct and very real consequences that it means for our neighbors and the people that we really care about in this community. And people in our community have the unequivocal right to know what is happening here in Sandy and the effect that it has on them and their families, not just in the short term, but the long term. And they, we, they can be trusted to know and to understand. And I think in very short order, I for one am going to start taking a more vocal stance. And I would call them councillors and candidates and people who are gonna be looking to take leadership roles in this community to really put forward a plan and a path forward for this community on the most critical vital issue that is facing us. Um and I say there's no good options, there's not, so it's gonna need to be bold. And you're gonna be really putting yourself out there, but darn it, that's what leadership's about. That's what running for elected office is all about. Um and these decisions can't just be hidden in city council chambers. These decisions and these conversations need to happen broadly and in public and in a transparent fashion. And I would look for this council and myself to really begin that process of doing so in very quick order. So that's my feeling on on the wastewater issue. With that, I will go ahead and conclude tonight's meeting.